Good evening, everyone. I'm calling this meeting of the Barrington Town Council to order at 7:00 PM on May 2nd, 2022. All members of the Barrington Town Council are present. So we're trying this again. We were doing this as a hybrid meeting, which means that we will take comment from folks who are attending virtually. The last few times we've tried it in this room, we've gotten reports that the audio was bad. I hope it's better this time. Welcome any information on that. We have worked hard to get this audio working tonight, so hopefully it will be better. If you want to be heard and you are attending virtually, please raise your hand. If you look along the bottom of the screen, you can see that. We'll give you an opportunity at the public comment section to be heard. And at this point, I would ask if you'd all join, rise and join me in our pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have also decided to read a land acknowledgement at the beginning of our meeting, so I'll begin that. Akiné, peace. We recognize the unique and enduring relationship that exists between indigenous peoples and their traditional territories. We acknowledge that we are in the ancestral homeland of the Poconocat tribe with the original territory of the Poconocat Nation. We commit to ongoing efforts to recognize, honor, reconcile and partner with the Poconocat people whose ancestral lands and water we benefit from today. Akiné. Next item on our agenda is some resolutions. And for the first one, I would ask if any member of the council would like to make a motion adopting the resolution honoring Barbara Lee as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. I'm going to now ask Barbara to come forward to the microphone up there. Whereas Barbara Lee was hired by the town of Barrington in September 1993 as a part-time employee in the tax assessor's office and accepted the full-time payroll clerk position in the finance department in August 1994. Whereas during her tenure, Ms. Lee was instrumental in transforming the payroll processing from a fully manual with paper checks and no direct deposit to the automated system we have today. Whereas in 2008, Ms. Lee built the first automated payroll system for the town, allowing for more timely processing and introduced direct deposit. Whereas in, on July 1, 2015, Ms. Lee was promoted to fiscal clerk, which recognized her ability to perform and cover most of the duties in the finance office. And whereas in the fall of 2020, Ms. Lee took part in replacing the in-house payroll system with an outsourced payroll company, building the system from the ground up. And whereas Ms. Lee has been an integral part of the finance department, covering tax collection, tax assessment duties, accounts payable, all while making sure our employees are paid on timely and accurate manner. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Town Council of the town of Barrington does hereby recognize and thank Barbara Lee for her outstanding efforts on behalf of the town, the taxpayers and employees for the past 28 years. Congratulations.
Thank you. It's been my pleasure. I've loved every day walking into the town hall. I've worked with wonderful people that have retired, new ones that have come on. It's a great town. I grew up here and live here. I will always be here and I appreciate all your hard work and it's been my pleasure. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is another resolution, and I wonder if any council member would like to make a motion to adopt the resolution honoring the Barrington High School swimming teams as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded? All those in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. Vice President Humm, if you could explain what we just passed.
Yeah, thank you. I'd be happy to read the resolution. And bear with me, it's a bit lengthier than the last one we read. But I think it's worth it. These are two impressive teams that Barrington High School has, full of student athletes. So whereas the 2021 to 22 Barrington High School varsity girls and boys swimming teams were led by head coach Sandy Gorham, assistant coach Kristen Audette, and the student athletes listed in the attached appendix A and appendix B respectively. And I'm not going to read those appendices, but you can refer to them in the written materials for a listing of the student athletes. Whereas the BHS girls swimming team and BHS boys swimming team overcame adversity by competing during the continued challenges and protocols during the unprecedented COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas both teams finished the season undefeated, both with a record of six and zero in their regular season meets. And whereas the BHS girls swimming team won the Rhode Island Interscholastic League Division One state championship by defeating LaSalle Academy by a score of 313 to 201. And whereas this year's championship is the eighth straight Rhode Island Interscholastic League state championship won by the BHS girls swimming team. And whereas the BHS boys swimming team won the Rhode Island Interscholastic League Division One state championship by defeating Bishop Hendrickson High School by a score of 402 to 365. And whereas this year's championship is the first for the BHS boys swimming team since 1989, and also the first time that both the BHS girls and boys swimming team won the state championship in the same year. And whereas on behalf of the town of Barrington, state of Rhode Island, the Barrington Town Council wishes to honor and congratulate the student athletes and coaches of the BHS girls swimming team and the BHS boys swimming team on their outstanding season culminating in a Rhode Island Interscholastic League state championship. Now therefore be it resolved that on behalf of the town of Barrington, state of Rhode Island, the Barrington Town Council by virtue of the authority vested in them by the citizens of Barrington, honor and congratulate the student athletes and coaches of the BHS girls and boys swimming teams on winning the Rhode Island Interscholastic League state championship.
Congratulations. Before we go into announcements, I thought I'd just offer the council members an opportunity if they wanted to highlight anything within the announcements. Or, okay, we can go straight into them. I would ask our acting town manager, Mary Ann Olivera, to take us through those, please.
The Arbor Day Foundation recognized Barrington as a Tree City USA and honor its commitment to effective urban forest management. And I want to recognize Colin O'Hara of our DPW department for making that happen. Beach parking passes, I know it says will begin May 2nd today at noon, but because of an adjustment to the system, the online system, we have changed that. It's been hopefully properly posted to be, begin on the 5th, Thursday at 12:00 noon. The budget hearing is Wednesday, May 11th at 7:00. It's a hybrid, so it will be in this room, the presentation room, as well as on Zoom. The 30th Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive is Saturday, May 14th. Please place a non-perishable and non-expired food item at your mailbox. I'm pleased to say that Camp Out at Barrington Beach, Saturday, May 21st to 22nd is sold out. That's a good thing. The financial town meeting is in person only, and that will be Wednesday, May 25th, at the high school auditorium at 7:00. The Memorial Day Parade is May 30th at 8:30 in the morning with the opening ceremony at Victory Gates at Barrington High School. And immediately following the parade, the closing ceremony will take place at Town Hall. We have board in commission openings. We have a committee on appropriations. We have two vacancies there. The vote will occur at the financial town meeting on May 25th. The deadline to submit applications is Wednesday, May 18th. The Economic Development Commission has one vacancy. It's a full member. Planning Board has two vacancies, a first and second alternate. Resilience and Energy Committee has one vacancy. It's a first alternate. There's one additional announcement that didn't make it onto the agenda, but the Barrington, Barrington's after-prom committee has asked that we put out the word that they're seeking volunteers for the May 13th after-prom party. They're seeking people to do decorations, run games, setup, breakdown, baked goods, and signup genius is online. And finally, the tree planting and removal, April 1st, 2021 to May 31st, 2022, 75 trees removed, 110 trees planted. That's it.
Thank you. The next items on our agenda are what we call the consent agenda. These are items that are considered routine by the Town Council, and they'll be enacted by one motion. There won't be a separate discussion on these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, and the request is for good cause, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there anything on the agenda that any council member would like to remove for separate discussion?
I have an item I'd like to discuss, but it doesn't need to be voted on separately.
Okay. Well, we'll find out if anybody else, and then anything that we want to remove? Okay. Any member of the public want to remove something from the consent agenda? Seeing none? Council Brier?
Item 12, the correspondence, the letter from the Bay Team requesting involvement from the opioid settlement fund. I agree with that, and I'd like them to be involved in the discussions about how that funding is used. I expect that they likely would have been. I just wanted to note that, and when it comes time that we have a discussion if they wouldn't be involved.
Okay. So do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We don't have any interviews or appointments. We do, as Mary Ann Olivera mentioned, we have some vacancies, so we're looking for volunteers. Next item on our agenda is to discuss and act on a resolution from the Bristol County Water Authority, the Water System Improvement Project. And Alan Klepper, the chair of the BCWA is here to explain that to us. Chairman Klepper.
Good evening. Behind you, there are several large maps. The one on the left is in Riverview. The one in the center and on the right, just two versions of the same thing, are right off, right off County Road, right off the trail. In essence, both of these projects are exactly the same. The piping is close to seven years old. It has trouble. We need to replace the pipes in the ground. That will require putting temporary connections by hoses to each of the homes that are indicated as blocks on this, in each of the parcels. In terms of the way it goes together, they are miles apart. Not long ago, the town repaved Riverview. And there's a requirement when we dig up a newly paved road to repave the whole road. And so we will be digging up a trench in that road to replace the pipe that's in there that rotted out. We'll replace that in the conventional manner. The thing that makes the other project so different is that part of it is, interjects with the plan on the trail. Now, the state was planning to do this work in 2025. Then all of a sudden, we discovered, and you drive to Providence, you see they're gearing up to do it now. If we don't get this little part done, that, and that's not the portion that goes up Old County Road, but the portion that is on the trail, a little segment of that, then they could deny us that and we'll be screwed. So we don't want to lose that opportunity, which is why I had our council include a small item for you folks. We're hoping that you will endorse our project. All we're asking, and first, we started by asking the contractor, why don't you do the northbound lane first? That got us nowhere. So they're doing the left lane. The problem, and I think it's easier if I could come up there and just point to it, we'll show you. Clear on this, on this map, the map. Here's County Road. You can see the two lanes, the northbound lane, the southbound lane, as you come into town. And right here, at this intersection, right at this turn, we have to make, we have to shut everything down, shut this lane down. So there's a question of whether the state will allow the traffic coming in to all be moved from the low-speed lane into the higher-speed lane, or whether there'll be some other issues. We plan to put in seven of these points. This is the critical one, because we're going to have to shut down this turnoff. And so we're going to reroute the traffic to come around. And we're doing this in a manner that's different. This is a special material. We pull it through, we pull it through the line. We make, we're going to make these openings that are six by 10. They'll be covered at night with a steel plate. Whether or not the state will allow us in this area, right here, right here, to have the steel plates in the road, that's another question. Because people may be going faster, and even if we put asphalt next to the plate, they may not allow it. The idea is to pull this through, and then it expands. We fill it with warm water, and the inside hardens to make a new pipe. So it creates a new pipe inside the old pipe. This is very effective. It's very expensive, but it's the most practical way, because we want to try to get this job done in a couple of weeks. Well, that's the issue here. I can give you more detail if you can stomach it, but I suspect that you just want to see what's going on. This is going to help the town, obviously, but this is the area. The part that is beyond the old section is not going to be affected at all. Nobody goes up that street, basically, except the homeowners. It's this one item and this item here. That's the critical elements here. So we're just asking, we want, we want to take your resolution. We want to take that to the state. We want to ask them to cooperate with us. Give us, you know, a couple of weeks in that area, and we'll have the job done and out of the way. That's what it's all about.
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks for the up close and personal presentation, too. That's something I wanted to add. My question is just on the communication plan for the affected residents and also the motorists coming through that area. I assume the Motorists communications might be a DOT issue, but I'm just curious if that's something that's already in the works, or if you have a plan.
Oh, yes. Now, I left with the manager, I left some information I can give you. This is a letter that we're giving to all of the people.
So this, this one here, correct?
Yeah. So we work very successfully in other towns where Sue Rabideau, who is a project engineer on this, communicates readily with all the residents, so they all know what's happening. And they have her number, they're able to call the authority and find out if there's any issues. But we will be connecting with each of the homes as we go through this project.
And thank you. Has this letter gone out, or is this the one that will go out?
It will go. I can't answer that question.
Gotcha.
I can't answer that question. My assumption is it may have already gone out, but, you know, it will prior to the start.
I just want to be clear on understanding. You don't need the council's approval for this project, but you're seeking our endorsement of the plan to make it more likely that the state says.
Well, cooperate. Exactly. That's right. Now, we have the franchise, we have the franchise to provide water to the town, public water to the town. So we're taking care of that and upgrading the system. This is an issue of trying to coerce the state. Please let us get this project done before you tear it up. Now, you know, I don't know if the state is explaining anything here. This project will probably happen in three phases. The first one is they grind off all the, all the stuff on the top, and that settles. Ultimately, they put on a first coating, and then they put on a second coating. That's the way that the state usually operates. So how far and how fast they come in this particular area, we have no idea. We have no idea. But what I want to do is to be able to take, have our project engineers take this resolution from the council when they go see Alviti and say, hey, Mr. DOT, cooperate with us. We'd like to get this done. Be using a special way to get it done quickly, and let us, let us take care of our town.
And am I correct to say that you folks are ready, willing and able to start as soon as you get the approvals?
We're, oh yeah, we're already gearing up to do this. The question now, I mean, it's coming quickly. We got caught because they moved it from 25 to now. And so, but we're moving as quickly as we can to make this happen.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Does anyone want to make a motion to adopt the resolution supporting the Bristol County Water Authority's performance of the water system upgrades?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is, let me just see, to discuss and act on the Town Council Contingency Fund. And this is, did I skip public comment? Okay. Can just go back. Yes. Okay. Item 16, public comment. This is a maximum three-minute statement. This is an agenda item for members of the public to speak regarding a topic that is not already on the agenda. If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand. And if you're doing it virtually, I see one hand raised already. And we will recognize you. Then please state your name and residency for the record. See, no one here. Priya Banjiri. Please, go ahead.
Hi, am I, am I clear? Can you hear me?
I can hear you, yes.
Great, thank you. So my name is Dr. Priya Banerjee. I live at 20 Manning Drive in Barrington. I've communicated some of my concerns online and was invited by Councilman Brier to speak tonight. I apologize that it's out of order. I have a lot of personal matters at home, including a very sick mother who I care for. So this was the only opportunity I had tonight to come in and speak with you, so I'll keep it very brief. But what brought about my presence tonight is my concern from an episode Sunday. I was out, I misread the instructions about the police open house for children. There was an event on Sunday. So inadvertently so, I took my daughter and dog from Windsor, I guess, that intersects with Middle Highway, so just like a few blocks over, to Federal Road. And we were using the sidewalks. It was myself, my daughter and my dog, and this was around 2:15 in the afternoon. So again, on a weekend afternoon, not really busy, not the busiest that this area could be. And I bring maybe a unique perspective to the whole situation, because I worked for over 11 years as the state's medical examiner slash forensic pathologist. So I have seen the bad outcomes of most events, including pedestrian deaths. And the utmost concern was raised to me because I was walking my own child, who over the next few years will be a walker. She's currently at Primrose, where she walks through the backyard to get to school. But middle school and high school, she will also be a pedestrian, given where we live in proximity to the schools. And the biggest issue I had was the lack of sidewalks, especially on Federal Road. I'm actually sort of flabbergasted, is what I'll say. We have a public administration building, you know, where people are visiting all the time, the public safety complex, and there is no sidewalk in front of it. We use the one in front of the soccer field and then crossed over into Federal Road along the side, you know, that the police station is on, that that little farm is on, the farm school is on. As the weather warms up, this area is just going to pick up incredibly with foot traffic, car traffic. And it is my utmost, you know, not only as a citizen, but as my professional opinion, that to me, this is, I mean, this is a public safety issue and a liability for the town, you know, that I'm bringing up, that this needs probably a crosswalk, but definitely a sidewalk. We almost got struck by a few cars coming around so fast from Middle Highway, turning whatever direction that is. So we were at that corner on the side of, the same side as the farm. We were basically a little bit past the farm. It's hidden by bushes and trees, which again, will flourish with the warmer weather. There is no visibility for myself. I'm short 5'1", my eight-year-old daughter and my 90-pound dog. We were almost struck probably twice. And you just have to understand that I'm paranoid at baseline because of my profession, so I am always sheltering my daughter and pulling her aside, saying, people drive really fast, and they're not as cautious as they need to be. But people basically turn that corner, going 50 miles per hour with zero visibility. And so it strikes me as sort of unbelievable that a public safety building, and then, you know, also a farm school, a school that is there to educate and draw the public there, lacks sidewalks. And I mean, there are other very important intersections that I'm not familiar with that, when I posted on Facebook, other people commented on, that needed sidewalks. But I'm speaking just on a very personal experience that I had this past weekend. And to make the point, I actually had my daughter sitting here with me. I wanted her to see mom speak about something that we went through. But I just wanted to take time out of my very busy schedule, and I appreciate you guys hearing me out of order to bring this to your attention.
Thank you, Dr. Banerjee. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard? Yes.
My route was on its own. If Banerjee is correct, when I would leave the post office, I'd take that corner, and I would take it slow because I traveled that for so many years. She's right, there's a blind spot there.
Yeah.
And that is apparently dangerous. I get the problem with the farm. It's hard to have a sidewalk that encompasses the whole farm, because you still have to have the driveway for the people who pull into the farm stand. So even if you did put sidewalks, it would still be a small section, where people would have to walk onto the farm to get around or go back out into the street to circumvent any cars parked there. But that is inherently dangerous spot. We've been warned, we have safety talks in the post office, which I know the council is aware of because of the kids on bikes.
Yep.
The post office has been involved, but that is one of the most dangerous spots in town. We're constantly told, and I'm wanting safety talks, be careful of that crew because you're not going to receive a suggestion.
Right.
Thank you for mentioning this.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you. I'm seeing one hand raised, but I think that is still Dr. Banerjee.
Sorry, sorry.
Okay, seeing no other hands raised, I'm closing public comment. And now we will move on to item sixteen, which is discuss an act on the Town Council Contingency Fund Memorial Day Parade. Phil, did you want to take us through this? These are these are just the costs that you've you've seen incurred and expect to have incurred?
Yes, I just outlined some costs that we've already incurred and anticipate for putting on the parade and the events at Town Hall and at Victory Gate. So these add up to roughly, I think forty-five hundred is a fair amount to cover everything. We might not need that that much, but I think that would give us a little bit of a comfort level to accomplish what we're trying to accomplish for Memorial Day.
Okay. Questions for our town manager? Okay, does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll move to approve up to forty-five hundred dollars from the council contingency for the twenty twenty-two Memorial Day Events and Parade.
Motion's made and seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next item is to discuss an act on the Committee on Appropriations' proposed reduction of the twenty twenty-three municipal budget. We saw that the the Committee on Appropriations is going to, in their proposed budget, reduce the municipal budget ask in two categories. One of them is six thousand dollars for the for air conditioning in the book sorting room at the at the library. And the other is for the police department. And that has to do with our initiative to get body-worn cameras and and also a police officer who can assist with the work of accreditation. Accreditation is something that we've done and we've redone, but we have to keep up on it. One of the great advantages is that it reduces our deductible in the event that we do have a claim involving the police department. I think it's fifty thousand dollars if we did not have accreditation. If we do, I think it's one thousand dollars. So that, those are those things. I wanted to raise it for us because in the in the past, we have kind of jointly advocated for adding back into the the budget some things that the Committee on Appropriations did not think were appropriate. And certainly with the the six thousand dollar item, I think we could, you know, with the there is the ability to make a motion at the FTM for up to fifty thousand dollars to add to a line item. So I'm not sure if we could add that because is it a separate line? So when you got to that topic, when you made it to that topic at the FTM, someone could certainly make a motion on the lines that you suggested. Okay. So does anyone have any thoughts on this?
I had a question. I know I I attended the COA meeting when this was discussed, and the police chief spoke about the importance of having a lieutenant focused on the the implementation of the body-worn cameras helps with compliance, adherence to the policy, making sure the footage is stored correctly. Because a lot of public trust could be lost if we have a program in place that doesn't run smoothly. I'd like to hear what what sort of risk would happen? What what sort of risk would we be assuming by delaying the new lieutenant and implementing this without the oversight that the chief believes we should have?
And I I did send the chief a note, but it was it was today, so I'm sure he hasn't seen it yet. And my question was along the same lines. The question is, are we ready to execute on the body-worn cameras? And how soon? So in other words, if we're not going to get the program set up for another six months, then that puts us most of the way through the fiscal year. But if if the program, if we could get the program going in in July, then we're waiting for a longer period before we could really execute on that with a lieutenant to 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 guide through the implementation.
If you haven't answered that question, we are moving forward at this time. So we're we're implementing the program.
Okay.
It hasn't slowed us down in that aspect.
Right.
We're still moving because there's a lot of stuff with the ordering and back ordering and things like that.
Right.
We are moving forward though.
Okay. So this is not a program that that'll be ready in November, December. It'll be ready within months, within
Yeah, trying sooner than later, yes. The only thing that can hold us back is backorder and things of that nature that are out of our control.
Okay. So I would be in in favor. So we can't, as a committee, vote to add that back in, but any individual can make a motion to add those funds back. And we can, as we have in the past, as a committee, vote to endorse or reject that idea. It it's not a binding motion, but it does send the message of the town council. I don't I don't want to delay a program like this, which I see is very important with, you know, and it's certainly possible that nothing happens, that we really need the body cameras, but you you want to have them in place sooner rather than later so that that we don't have to worry about anything happening. It's it. That's my view. Anyone else?
Suffice to say, I I agree wholeheartedly. This is something I think it's a major objective of the police chief and the department, and I I just don't see any reason why we would delay.
Okay. So I I will make a motion to to propose to the FTM adding back into the budget the money for the body-worn cameras program that was removed by the COA. And that would just be a resolution from us asking for that. Wanting to propose endorsing such a resolution. Okay. I make a motion that we endorse a motion to add back to the municipal budget the funds for the body-worn camera program that were removed in the proposed budget by the COA.
I'll second that.
Okay, made and seconded. Any further discussion?
I have a question. So is the then does this include the half the annual salary for the new lieutenant or no? That's a separate, or it does?
It does.
All right.
It does.
I just wanted to confirm.
So so putting this money back doesn't avoid delaying the program. It provides the proper oversight of the program. So right, so the is that correct? So the the program moves forward without this funding, but we implement the program before having the lieutenant in place who will oversee it.
It will ensure a smooth operation, yes.
Right. Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next item on the agenda is to discuss an act on a financial town meeting resolution.
President Carroll can ask a question first?
Sure.
Just for clarity's sake, on the AC for the library sorting room, is that going to be made, that there's a motion that's going to be made at the financial town meeting regarding that?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I I would make such a motion for the six thousand dollars to to get that room cooled down so that the people working in there can work in conditions better than the council chambers, which also get hot.
Yeah.
So I I would make that motion at the meeting, but it's it's less than the fifty thousand, so we can do it then.
You you brought up a point that you asked if there is a budget line for it.
Yeah.
Because it is, it's on the capital budget. So was six thousand removed from a line or was a six thousand dollar line removed?
It's a the, this is for the, would be in the PEC Center Improvements Capital Reserve Fund, but specifically for that, it was six thousand dollars was taken. It was reduced, it was twelve thousand originally, it was reduced by six thousand, so.
Okay, so there is a line for it to go to.
There's still six thousand in there.
Yes. For folks who are wondering what that's about, we have a series of different motions, some for if there is a line item in there, some if there's no line item, you need to make a motion to add that line item and then the amount. So it's a it's a little confusing, but in this case, I think we can just do it at the meeting because there's already a line item. The next item is to discuss an act on a financial town meeting resolution. And this is regarding the Carmelite Monastery Building and Property. And I would ask if our town planner, Teresa Kreen, could kind of take us through this a little bit. Just to orient folks, we bought the at at last year's financial town meeting, we agreed to buy the property that housed the Carmelite Monastery. During that meeting and from the beginning, we had talked about preserving the building. There's been a request from the committee that's been working on this that we modify that to say that the building could be torn down. We felt that because at the FTM last year, it was understood that we would not be tearing down the building, that we would need the people at the FTM to rule on that again. And so that's sort of the background to this. Teresa?
Great, sure. Thank you, President Carroll. Yes, so the planning process for the twenty-five Watson Avenue property, the Carmelite Monastery, started back in fall of twenty twenty-one. We have a wonderful committee of nineteen members, sixteen are members representing not only boards and commissions, we have four resident representatives on the committee, we have two alternates. Counselor Conway serves on the committee, and then I staff it as a facilitator, and we have the administrative clerk. So we've had a lot of meetings. I want to thank the committee for all the hard work that they've put in thus far in many meetings. And we are completed with the, we've completed the discovery phase. We've completed what's called the design funnel phase, and we've had a consultant called Forward Planning and Signal Works Architecture and Traverse Landscape Architecture as our consultant team, helping us through this process and providing the design concepts and also the technical reports that we've commissioned from them. So we are just starting the delivery phase, and we are waiting on our consultant, our economic consultant, real estate consultant, Forward Planning, his name is Todd Poole, to provide the committee with the proposed building program and a pro forma, a fiscal impact analysis, and a traffic study. And that will then tee up the committee and the planning department to move forward with draft comprehensive plan amendments for the site and relative zoning so that we can be prepared to issue an RFP for to to attract a developer to the site. This is, so the work is still in progress, is my point with all of that. We realized that because of the upcoming financial town meeting and some of the alternatives that were on the table, that based on the minutes from the financial town meeting of last year, we did, there is not the option to pursue an alternative for the site that assumes that we can demolish the existing structure because the FTM minutes say retain the existing structure or refurbish refurbishment of the existing structure. So all this vote that was that took place on April twenty-fifth last Monday at our meeting, all this vote is recommending to town council, the ad hoc committee is advisory to town council. So the vote that was taken, eleven members in favor and three opposed, is to include on the financial town meeting agenda a referendum that authorizes the town to allow the option, the key word here is option, for future redevelopment to either physically modify or demolish the existing Carmelite Monastery structure at twenty-five Watson Avenue. Eleven members of the twenty-five Watson Ad Hoc Committee were voted in favor of this, three voted in opposition, and Counselor Conway and myself abstained. I've been serving as a facilitator, so I am not participating in the votes. So that is where we are with the process. The committee is recommending the to town council to consider this for inclusion on the May twenty-fifth FTM agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. We have heard from at least one neighbor who expressed a strong support for the idea of using the existing structure and not demolishing that that structure. So I'm I'm sure there are other folks in support. What are the thoughts of the council on this?
Well, I think when we went through this process last year, our, we had some principles involved in in this that were that we talked about openly with the public. And one of them was that we would, it would be an opportunity for senior housing. Another one was that we would preserve green space and maintain the character of the neighborhood. And a third was control. And on that issue, at the FTM, the public had an opportunity to vote on whether to purchase the property with the building or not purchase the property at all. I think that in keeping with our commitment to make sure that we control the property so that the community can decide what they'd like to see there, that the public should have the opportunity to vote on whether or not to keep the building in keeping with our with our commitment.
Anyone else on the council? And I suspect anyone from the audience want to be here first?
If I may, I'm the liaison for, as Ms. Kreen mentioned, I'm the liaison for the Watson Committee. And I will say it's been a really admirable effort for all committee members who are representing the the various commission and committee that they they serve on, as well as the town's interest, as well as the community and the neighborhood itself. I think what's really important to know is that this started in the design funnel. We mentioned the design funnel in two sentences, but it was really months and hours and hours of discussion and work. And it was anywhere from, should this be a commercial area? Should this be a recreational facility? Should it be a community? Or should it be residential? Or should it be open space? And and the design funnel that that has come down to is basically three various potential opportunities. One is preserving the building with additional building outside of that. Another one is preserving the building or making an addition to it. And the third is removing the building completely and building another structure. One of the key pieces that keeps coming up for members of the committee is what is the impact? What is the fiscal impact? What's the traffic impact? What's the impact on the school and the community? What will a developer be able to build on? What will they decline involvement in because they don't have an ability to to get the funds back that they've spent? This option gives our consultants the opportunity to look at all of those perspectives and really give the data behind what those pieces are. It's not set in stone. It doesn't mean we absolutely take it down. It's not a yea or nay whether or not the building comes down, but I think what it does is it says, is this property going to be developed in the way that it's that serves the town, serves the neighborhood, serves the community? And as it stands now, if we limit ourselves, we aren't able to really explore what all of those options are. And I think it's really about having the best option for all. And I would say that very loud and clear members of the committee have expressed their concerns and very, they've been received and and folks have made decisions that are potentially counter to what you'd expect as a representative of their committee, counter to what that may be. For example, I I don't think we have ever had a conversation about a commercial property, despite the fact that we have EDC. I would say the same thing about about Parks and Rec. We are not, nobody has argued for a community center with or turning it into a field because they understand to preserve the neighborhood, to preserve the community, and to do what's best for the community is important. So I think it's, the other piece for me is that we had three hundred and fifty people at the FTM last So I think it's the other piece for me is that we had three hundred and fifty people at the FTM last year. And while that's a great turnout for the FTM, it's not representative of the town. I think it's really important that we get as many people to come to the FTM this year and to to be able to provide some input. Um, but I do think that giving this back to the community, as Counselor Castell said, the control within the town um and being able to bring it back to the voters to be able to make a decision on what we go for with next. So that's just my my input as liaison.
Okay.
We have a process question. Um, my understanding is if we, whenever we get to a final project that that we want to approve, it involves selling this property to a developer who will develop it, which would that that then requires a vote at the FTM. Is that correct?
That's right.
So this is just a step to make sure that we get the best possible opportunities and then there will be a second vote when the voters can choose if they like it or don't like it, right?
Uh, they would they would be choosing whether to accept uh a bid or or bids. I'm not sure how that works based on that. Uh, and I I think that's a good point. One of the things we've all said is control. Um, so this is a little bit unusual. We're not flipping this property, um but we're not going to own it either. Uh, what we're talking about is putting restrictions on what can go on that property. So that a developer coming in can develop it within those restrictions. Uh, but then we sell it. We we don't want to be in the business of being landlords or um or even developers. Wh- what we're trying to do though is maintain a certain amount of control so we can put some parameters on what they can put on that property, uh, which I think is is a good thing. Um, so uh a member of the public would like to be heard. Please come to the microphone.
Hello, I'm Mary Grenier. I'm on the ad hoc committee um with Theresa Cream and um the reason I'm speaking is because I'm speaking in um support of the, well, not support. Um, we are submitting a minority statement to explain our negative votes and the solicitor recommended that we bring it as a letter and discuss it at the meeting tonight. So I'm submitting this um from David Butera and Diane Lipscomb, as well as myself, Mary Grenier. And um first, we are extremely grateful to Teresa Cream. She's been a great leader. She's the director of planning. Um, and all of the members of the committee have been wonderful to work with and everybody brings their own perspective. So we're we're very grateful to be um invited to be on the committee and represent the neighborhood. We are, the three of us are abutters to the building. Um, so we've voted against the proposal to add an option to demolish the monastery um for a number of reasons. And we've discussed at the Financial Town Hall meeting a year ago, the town voted to purchase the Watson Avenue property and to preserve the monastery. We have been meeting all this time in good faith and within the limits imposed by the FTM vote by President Carroll's clear statement at the monastery, um at the FTM that the monastery will not be torn down and based on the town solicitor's solicitor's statements at the FTM. We have also been committed to aligning our recommendations throughout this whole process to the um comprehensive plan and the themes of the towns um having the majority of the community import during this process. So all throughout the whole process, there have been postings on the town website to input your um your vote. You know, what do you want to see done with this property? It was well publicized. It went for months. How long, Theresa? It was two months. It was on the on the proper on the um town financial website as a banner and you could click on it and you could put your comments in as to what you would like done with the property. Um, and it wasn't just the property, it was the land. There were many, many comments that were compiled and um, so I feel like the town did have sufficient input to this process. They were invited to a um meeting right in this room where we put all of the options up on the board. The um, there was voting done by the members of the community, a dot vote that wasn't official, but it overwhelmingly was um to preserve the monastery. So um the ad hoc committee, um, we don't have sufficient data at hand to make an informed decision related to the motion to um to demolish the building. And the rationale offered for the vote was to give more flexibility for the development options. And um at this point in time, we have not seen any neighborhood impact analysis or data. Um, and you know, that is now starting. But we don't have that data at hand to um be able to make a a decision on whether or not to demolish. Um, the town solicited the input from the community in three manners. The one that I um first at the Financial Town Meeting as a vote. Second was the online comment um that I mentioned, and the third was the dot voting. And in every one of these, the community um voted to preserve the monit- monastery. Now, obviously, not every member of the committee voted to preserve the monastery because everybody has different um goals on that committee. They represent different um committees. But the the community voted to preserve the monastery. During the course of our meetings, um it was revealed that the monastery is constructed with material that contains asbestos. There is apparently no risk to the neighbors or future occupants unless the building is demolished. Demolition has the potential to result in an unnecessary health risk to abutters and the general neighborhood due to the asbestos contained within the building walls and foundation. We ask you all to consider whether you would be comfortable living immediately next to an asbestos contained demolition project. We live eighteen feet from the property. Um, I don't believe that there's any abatement that can prevent the asbestos getting into the environment, into the air. Um, and I'd like you to all consider whether you would risk exposing your family, your children, your grandchildren um to demolition of an asbestos laden building eighteen feet from your from your home. Um, we feel that we would need to move out, move away until that um until the area was confirmed clear. Um, and I feel that the the community has spoken time and time again in support of preserving the building. The um, our wonderful consultants um first proposed the the preservation of the building and said that it could be a beautiful building, that it was structurally sound and that um, you know, it could be a wonderful place for the seniors that we hope that will live there. So we're strongly opposed to this being an option at the FTM. I also think it would, um, you know, we went last year to the FTM with the proposal to purchase without a lot of um knowledge of the from the community. People kind of voted blind and they'll be doing the same thing again this time. They they're going to look at it and say, hey, we voted to preserve it and now we're voting to potentially demolish it. And I think it's um it's a premature decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please come forward.
Hi, frankly, Ten Waverly Road. I was involved in a financial town meeting last year. During the votes, there was a voice vote, stand up and paper. During the process, people were on cell phones, having friends and neighbors flock into the meeting. Not everybody knew exactly what was going on as far as purchasing this property. After the final paper vote, people were saying, well, what are they going to do with it? Well, what'd you hear? No, I just I just showed up. I mean, that was a very poor process. So I was wondering if at the FTM this year, if we had a quorum, we found out exactly what's going to happen. And like the point was brought out, not everybody shows up to the FTM. Three hundred is a great meeting. Well, what is it seventeen thousand people in town? Is it possible that we find out what's going to happen at the FTM and then put this on the ballot in November for a townwide vote? Uh, asbestos abatement. I've been involved in asbestos abatement in the post office. I was ahead of maintenance there for a couple of years. We're right across from the middle school. Asbestos abatement. I'm going to tell you, I it's something like you've never seen. These look like people from outer space. They have these suits. They have bags. They have trucks sucking out the air out of the building. Asbestos doesn't escape. And if I'm not mistaken, state law requires any property that has asbestos, no matter what you do to it, that asbestos has to be evaded.
Uh, so it depends on what you mean by abatement.
Yeah, you have to get rid of it.
It could be encapsulated.
Uh, it's difficult in some some degrees. The post office, they didn't even want to attempt to encapsulate it. We actually had a specialty company come in from Boston. Uh, I I've never really heard of asbestos escaping into the environment like that. Uh, the way they encapsulated, the way they remediated. Uh, we were right across from the middle school. We took every precaution. The other, um, my last question is if this property is eventually sold, do you think we'll be able to recoup the initial initial purchase price and all subsequent costs of all the studies being performed? Is that an option? And if that money is recouped, would it be put back into the town budget as a a tax break? Because initially was, everybody was saying, oh, this is going to help the seniors. It's going to give them a place to live when they retire and it's gonna, like I said, help the seniors. But it really didn't. I'm a senior, fixed income, and the purchase of that property raised my taxes. It did just the opposite of what they said it was going to do at the time. Now, in the future, do you think this can be turned around? This money, if it's recouped, would be put to the use of lowering the tax base a little bit? Just just questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Thank you.
Um, uh, so to answer your last question first, uh, this was a loan. Uh, so we didn't pay for it just out of the budget. So the tax impact is fairly minimal. It's based on what our payments are, not the whole three point five million dollars. So uh, what would happen if we got that money back? We'd pay off the loan. So that that's what would happen. Will we get that money back? It's it's hard to say because um it sort of depends on what we put there. Um, I think if we sold it as is, we could make it back pretty easily in this market. Um, but uh, I think what we're doing is we're, because we wanted that control, we're telling developers, you can't put whatever you want. You have to put what we say. You have some flexibility, but it has to be what we say. So losing that that um freedom uh means the property is worth a little bit less than it would be otherwise. You know, I I still think it's possible we could get the three point five million back, uh, given that what the real estate market is doing. And I think the value of the property is um well above that, but I'm I'm not an appraiser. Uh, so.
Is it possible, Mr. Carroll, that this thing go to the FTM for a vote and everything was agreed on? You can say it was a very small FTM meeting. Is it possible to go into the November vote townwide on the proposal of the property?
I don't think so. I mean, we're so this is sort of technically, uh, I'm not even sure that that we need to do this as a matter of law, but as a matter of fairness, we felt that we did. Because we did come in and say we're going to preserve the building. Uh, so.
People didn't know about it because they should have seen the crowd rushing into the building because it was unfortunate.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sure you heard that.
I, yeah, that's right. Um, but this time is a little bit different because we've had months of public meetings. And and if people don't know about the public meetings which are posted, which we've had on our banner, we've gotten input. If people don't know about that, um, I can't help that. How else? We we're conveying the information. There's plenty of opportunity to be heard on this. So this is different than when we found out about an offer, a possibility, and we made an offer and we can't share that offer because we're not going to negotiate in public. Um, but I think it's a different situation now. I I wonder if anyone else, please come forward.
So hello, my my name is Ian Burgess and I live at thirty three Adelaide Avenue. Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank you all uh for your service on the town council. It's not easy and we really appreciate it. I I guess they say politics is the art of the possible. And I guess it's no different for you in local politics. And so it's pretty tempting to ask for options. But it's wrong and it's not democratic. So let's think about the facts. Facts are that when you brought this to the to the town at the last town financial meeting, it passed by one vote. I guess we'll never know. If you hadn't included in the um uh, in in what we voted on, keeping the monastery, I guess we'll never know whether it would have passed. I guess you're pretty pleased that it did pass. You got the control that you're looking for and that's not a bad thing. My, I I think we're all really honest with ourselves. It would not have passed had you not included maintaining the building. Second fact, maintaining the building has been absolutely the most popular option as you have gone out through the ad hoc committee and sought public input. Mr. Carroll, you just said you've been you've been out to the public, you've had many months, you've publicized and the public has spoken. Throughout the visioning process, the consent, the main thing coming out of the visioning process was building consensus with the community. And you did that. You went out, you took ten options out to the community and you asked the community to to give you their opinion. And with with a resounding focus, they asked to keep the monastery. Maintaining the monastery with a with approximately twenty units for senior housing meets all the elements, many, many of the elements of the of the town comprehensive plan. And so I would ask you not to take this to the town financial meeting. It's 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 not in line with what we voted on last time and it's not in line with what the community has said throughout the ad hoc committee. Much braver is to come back when you know exactly what you want to build on that site and bring that to the town. The town very much wants to keep that monastery. If you want to not keep the monastery, then come back with a fully baked um, uh, a fully baked plan. It's like you're asking for a get out of jail free card or a blank check. You're asking the town to say, yeah, you can knock it down. We're not actually going to tell you what we're going to do with it because we haven't decided yet. Decide what you want to do with it and then come back to the town. Thank you for hearing my comment. Thanks.
I'm Elizabeth Reeser, forty two Watson. So I would echo what my neighbors have said. There has been ample opportunity for Barrington residents to respond to the proposed ideas of this design funnel. It's been up since the fall. Um, multiple renditions have gone um on the website. People have had many chances to go on, log their opinions, and they have. And again, overwhelmingly, the support was to preserve the building. I believe that the intent was to maintain control over that area um as far as development goes. And I think this is a slippery slope. If you now say, well, we'd like the option of demolishing, what you're really doing is now opening up to a developer more options as far as size. Because no one's going to go, oh, we'll put a small building like there is now back. What we really want to do is put up a bigger building. And density is our a huge concern for for those of us that live in that area because it is simply just not the right place for a high density development. So if you have that restriction in place, it definitely gives you the control to prevent a developer from going in and saying, we'd love to have this awesome huge building there. This this gives that sort of um the parameters. Um, additionally, we are still just whatever controls they have for removing asbestos. Um, this isn't, and I'm not familiar with the post office um work. Um, this isn't, and I'm not familiar with the post office, um, work at all. But this isn't just a matter of like taking some insulation off pipes, right? This is the, this is the foundational structure of that building. The asbestos is in the concrete from, from what I understand. So this is like a huge, large scale operation to remove that. This isn't going in with suits with a little bit of vacuuming and, um, once this asbestos, if any, escapes in the air, one, that's a windy area. You're right, you got the ocean, ocean breeze. It's going to blow everywhere. It's not just going to blow to Mary's house. It's going to blow all over. Two, asbestos is, from what I've read, it doesn't go away. It's just, um, like a fiber and it will land in the soil until that soil is disturbed and then it gets in the air again. So anything that does escape is at risk for future always becoming a, a potential problem again. Um, and I just want to underscore that this is not a small pipe, uh, you know, insulation issue. This is an entire building, building structure. The whole building is asbestos, you know? So, um, I ask you to consider that when you open the option for demolition. Um, and then finally, I, I agree that when people go to the town meetings, um, they often are there for one item. They're, they, you know, they're interested in something. They go, they hear out all of the different items. They vote here or there. Um, but they, they, they may not actually be interested in, in everything. Um, the people who are really interested in this have been following this very closely all fall. And again, they've had the chance to speak, um, through the surveys. And I believe that they've made their opinions known and they, they want this monastery to stay. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Please.
Wildly nervous. I'm Paige Barber. I live at, um, 46 Clark Road. Um, I was at the financial town meeting last year when the vote took place. I've been to basically all of the Zoom meetings, um, that I could attend. I've been to the, uh, in-person meetings when I could attend. And I want to reiterate the things that were said by Mary, Mr. Burgess and everybody. That what's, what's been so surprising to me is that, so we, you know, we're at the first meeting. We all voted it was to preserve the building and to buy it so we had control. And it's been really surprising to me that in every single meeting that we've had, as all of our, um, you know, opinions have been made and we keep voting, you know, or like putting the dots on or voting or doing, you know, doing the thing online, sort of proposing to maintain the building, that every single time I go to a meeting, I'm just sort of amazed that back up on the board are all of the options for a bigger building, a building with cottage courts, a building with more cottage courts, rearranged cottage courts. And I've just been so surprised that this continues to be sort of put out there as though it, I feel like it's like, um, you know, boiling the lobster, sort of starting in cold water is that they feel, I get the sense is they keep putting those things out there that eventually there'll be enough people that kind of go, oh, that looks sort of nice and we'll vote for it. Whereas, you know, really month after month after month, everybody that is concerned and close by in the ad hoc committee has made it really clear that we want to preserve the building, preserve the green space. And that anything in addition to that is really not in keeping with the neighborhood. And I, and I understand your comment about opening it up to the entire town. There's a lot of voters in Barrington that weren't there. But I, I think it's one of those things where I, I'm not sure I care where somebody at the far reaches of Barrington feels about the monastery on Watson. They don't live there. They don't understand it. They don't, they don't walk our streets. They don't have kids that ride their little scooters or take their wagons back and forth to the beach. So, um, I'm sort of opposed also to, you know, opening it up and proposing for the demolition because I really feel that for months and months and months, we've made clear what we want. Um, but all these other options keep sort of staying there in spite of our, you know, very obvious preference. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Neizer, please.
Thank you. I'm, I, I agree with Paige and Ian and, and Mary and, you know, again, I feel like it's a broken record. The meetings I've been to since December, we liked the proposed 24 units and land preservation so far. I would prefer green space, but if it must be developed for housing, I would favor lower density senior housing. When you brought this, and, and these are comments, not only that we're in the Barrington Times, these are comments from the survey, if anybody read it, that was done over the months. We've had blue dots, green dots and yellow dots. The fact of the matter is, is that the public, the blue dots, correct me if I'm wrong, were the most popular, which was to maintain the building, lower density. And this is our neighborhood. As I mentioned before, we're not a commercial piece of property. You have right now, housing developments that were built on commercial property, never on non-commercial property. This is our home and this is a neighborhood. And as Ian said and Paige said, nobody from the other side of town is going to care. What I feel is that you made a proposal. That is how you got your vote and you got the sale of the property. I don't think it's fair to go back and switch and bait depending on who the audience is. That's not fair. This is a process. You made people sit through a process. You made, I've been doing this since December. And as I said at the first meeting, I don't want to waste my time. I've put a lot of work into this. So did this committee. So did my neighbors. In fact, we had to ask for neighbors to be on this committee, which was a shame because what was on that committee and still is on some of that committee is special interest. I want this, in fact, after the last meeting, which was interesting, you all sat there and said, except for you, you weren't there. You all said, we want this to be 55, uh, uh, and senior housing. I thought, great, we got one thing in cement. What does some of the people stand up and go, well, we want it to be affordable housing? What is, just a second. Did the committee not listen? You know, we keep going backward. I felt after that last meeting, we are back at square zero. The asbestos, I'm kind of going, going points here, so excuse my, um, jumping. We talked about asbestos. That asbestos also is going to run down that road and into the bay. I want you to know that I am also the face of, and, and I said this at the last meeting. I have lung cancer. I don't appreciate the fact that I have to live near asbestos. It's hard enough. It's a disease that is, is horrible and I certainly don't know how I got it. I don't smoke. I don't drink. I don't, I, I run three miles a day, but I got it. How did I get it? I might've gotten it from that little piece of asbestos that was floating in someone's air. Who knows? We want the building to be preserved. We're hoping that you keep your word and bring something to the financial town meeting. Cause you know what? You don't have anything in front of you. If you go into court and many of your lawyers, you usually have something in front of you, papers and, and, and statistics and studies and whatnot. You have zero. You're going into that thing in three weeks again, just as we felt three days prior to you buying the financial, the, um, property, which, you know, really wasn't an opposed to be buying it. I was opposed to what the process was. Nobody knew. We got people in there because some of us, Elizabeth, we banged Mary, we banged on doors and we had neighbors on Fremont who didn't even know that you were buying this. I mean, that's, that's a sham. That's terrible. I don't understand that. So when you say, well, you know, people had enough, they did. They voted. They, they have put in your, you asked their, for their public input. They've given their public input that you, you brought that to the financial town meeting last year with the preservation of the building. You get what you asked for. I don't think you get to turn around and ask again. As I said to my kids, when I say no, it's no. We don't run a democracy in my house. We run a dictatorship. And when my kids are told something, they don't ask again. That's it. It's done. Now what we do is we take what the no was and we make it into something beautiful. That building can be beautiful and I keep hearing, well, it's ugly. It's just, you know what? There are two monasteries left in the world of karma light clustered nuns. That was one of them. There's now one left in the world. Let's keep the history. I have a hundred year old house. I restore. It's my passion. I decorate. It's my passion and I garden. It's my passion. I love making things beautiful. I think it can be beautiful. And I think that we need to remember, this is a small part of our town. Let's say we've given the seniors the housing that they need and want. It's better than nothing. So let's do what we said we were going to do. We're with you on the financial town meeting last year. It's preserved. Let's keep it preserved. Can't keep flip flopping. And you have nothing in front of you. So you're asking people to vote on something they don't know, as Ian said. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, please?
Walt Gertler, I've been a lifelong member of the Barrington community and own a home in 22 Woodland Road. My mother still lives here in our family house in the country club plot. I'd just like to say, you know, fantastic job picking up a beautiful piece of property right on the Barrington beach, three and a half million dollars. When housed four bedroom colonials, three blocks from the beach are going for over a million dollars. Okay? You're worried that the developer isn't going to pick up and want to build on that property with the restrictions that are currently in place. You want to give them more flexibility. There is, it, it, there isn't a lot of buildable property. And, and believe me, if this was all for an offer for three and a half million dollars, I would be trying to find a group of investors to build on that property, low density, use the existing building. I mean, I've seen what they've done with the Tourister Building and all kinds of old buildings, they're the same generation and we can build some nice, you know, accommodations hopefully for the elderly. Cause I'd love to see that. It's greatly, greatly needed. Um, and it doesn't have to be high density. I think there's going to be a lot of, a lot of people that would want to develop that property with, with the guidelines that are in place. I think if you give anybody the option to tear it down because it could be more profitable, they will tell it, tear it down. Once they get a hold of the property, if they, if it's more profitable to tear it down, tear it down. So if you give them the option, I think it, it, it's a done deal. That's what's going to happen to it. And that's my.
Carol, one of the things that has really been challenging, and I'm sorry, I'm not going to speak directly to you, but I'm happy to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, one of the things that's been really challenging is definition. We have had a few different challenges with definition in the committee and I think we've gone backwards, um, at times. There was a comment about low density could be up to 70 units. And that was a reference from one of our consultants who was talking about the term low density can be up to 70 units. There was no implication that there would be 70 units on that property. In fact, the neighbors, all very specifically, and you, I'm sure many of you know, I am one of your neighbors. I live on Bluff Road. I am part of that neighborhood. My children ride their bikes. They would be riding through plumes of asbestos, had there been plumes of asbestos. Um, that's my community too. The committee heard loud and clear that there was not an appetite for 70 units on that property. And therefore every option has at least 35. When we talk about the option to remove the building, it is not giving a developer the option to remove the building. It is giving our consultants the option to look at the data if we were to remove the building. There is no determination that the building will be removed if we say the option is presented at the FTM. I want to make that really, really clear because I'm afraid that many of you are misinterpreting that. And I understand your fear and I understand your concern, but that is not what we're talking about. What we are talking about is putting an option to have the consultants investigate what the fiscal impacts will be. Every one of those plans has 35 units, 35 buildings. If they come back and they say, because you're absolutely right, it's a beautiful piece of property. I have no doubt that they'll make the money back. But if they come back and they say, there's no way that you can rent those, build those units for more than whatever it may be. And that is one of the options that looks as though it's going to be a money loser. The committee may say, that's not the option for us. That doesn't mean that that option is off the table. That doesn't mean when it goes to council, that we all are going to make a decision that's going to hurt the neighborhood. I really want everyone to understand that this is an option, an option to have the consultants investigate what the real impact is. And then the committee can make an, a recommendation based on what the possibilities are. That does not mean that the option set in stone, that does not mean that we have restricted or we are saying to a developer, you can tear that down.
Well, if the option was off the table and the consultants couldn't view that as, as a viable option at this time. And you brought it to the developers and the developers said, oh, we can't make any money on that. We're not going to give you the three and a half or by this time, because you spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on consultants or I don't know what the number is, but you spend, you want to recoup that money as well. We, the developers can't. It, would you then go back and say, okay, now we have to bring it back to the committee and say, well, now we need some more options because the one that the people wanted, nobody was willing to pick that up. I'm saying, I, I'm having a hard time believing that a developer will not pick up an option to develop it.
They may, and they may return it to R40, which is what the zoning is right now. And there may be nine homes on that and they will not preserve the monastery.
Yeah.
That is, that is truly, if, if we want to talk about democracy, and I did this last Monday, this is, this is the input. Otherwise it goes back to a private, private developer and there is no town.
So you're saying you wouldn't go back and ask the town financial committee later.
Not my.
Yeah.
I am a member of the town council. I have, my personal perspective is better for our community and our neighborhood to have input, to be the neighbors who are in the room, having the conversation, to be able to have this conversation as opposed to a private developer who could build out every one of those lots to the extent that they are feasibly and legally allowed to do and will completely change the neighborhood for the rest of the time that we all live there. And that is the choice that we all decided to make when we purchased the property was to keep control within the town. I think Zion was in the back of all of our heads that there was a lost opportunity there. And if we were going to move forward in a way that was best for the community, best for the town and possible for the neighbors to have an input, this was the option.
Uh, anyone who hasn't been heard yet? Okay. Who hasn't been heard yet? You can, you can come forward if you haven't heard. We're just going to give everybody one opportunity to speak, so.
Okay. Very quickly, and thank you, everybody. And thank you, Annalise and Theresa for all you're doing. I, I just wanted to, you know, I think that, um, I guess I wanted to just say that the consultants are, as, as I understand it, they're exploring a number of different options. That is, that, that is reasonable. Um, it doesn't, I, I don't see the logic though, in putting one thing on the table and saying that we need to get approval for the consultants to be able to explore the possibility of, of building a new building. There are a number of different aspects of what the consultants are doing, which, which would actually require a number of different investigations. For example, traffic impact. For example, you know, school impact. So, so there's a number of other things that they're not on the table today. We're not going back to the, you know, and we're not, we, you know, so I think, so I think that it seems to me to be rather premature. The consultants can still explore a number of different options without this particular vote. And I do understand, and I think that's been said a number of times, that this is just an option. But I know certainly that once the option is on the table, it's on the table. You can't take it away. And so, so by putting an option on the table, you're basically lifting a flag to say, this is a viable possibility. Um, you know, but once we do a traffic impact study, it may be that having 40 units with 60 cars isn't a viable possibility because the road is 18 feet. So there's an, it seems to me that this, this particular vote, and that's why we voted against it, seems premature, given that we don't have enough information on the table to be able to make an educated judgment about whether this is or not reasonable. So just thank you for the opportunities.
Thank you. Um, I, I would ask if we could unmute Vanessa Cuzzo. I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing that name right.
Hi, how are you?
Hi, please go ahead.
Sure, sure, sure. Um, sorry, let me just switch to this. So, um, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak and I apologize. I am home with a sick child, so I would be there in person. Um, don't take that as my lack of interest, but so Vanessa, it's technically Vanessa Sheehan of 35 Adelaide Avenue. Um, and you know, first of all, I just wanted to thank everyone for their time, the town council, the committee and the neighbors. We just moved to Barrington, um, within the last six months and I really had no appreciation for the time that people come into town politics. So, you know, so thank you to everyone for that. Um, just another, it's more observations. The first observation that I wanted to make was that it's been rather frustrating to me to have watched this played out over the last six months. Again, I don't have, you know, the, the. to have watched this played out over the last six months. Again, I don't have, you know, the, the in-person history before that. But some in the past six months to have listened to a lot of consultants, and I understand this is the way this works, but to listen to consultants who live nowhere near here, who know nothing about our community and our neighborhood, speak about a parcel of land and what they're going to do to it, and the changes that can be made and the possibilities. And I understand that's their role, that's their job. But it, it just feels very disingenuine to, to hear them speaking about this, this particular piece of property. So in terms of the asbestos, I really appeal to you as a mother of two small children. And I am not an expert, but all that I've learned through this process and on my own is incredibly alarming. I'm also a parent to what, what they consider two super premies. My children were born at two pounds each. We spent three and a half months in the NICU. They were hooked up to ventilators and CPAP machines. They will have lung sensitivity likely for the rest of their lives. So I am extremely concerned about the short-term impacts, but I am deadly afraid of the long-term consequences of asbestos. And I'm terrified, not only for the safety and health of my children, but for the entire community. I'm also concerned about what the introduction of asbestos does to the air, the land, and the water. So I implore the committee to fully investigate the consequences of the destruction of this building. I, I don't think that we've spent enough time considering the impact of that on the neighborhood, on the wildlife, and on the neighbors living there. And I understand, you know, there, there are people who live nearby, that everybody's in town. But those of us who can see this building from our windows, you know, when we're outside in the street with our children, we are the ones impacted by this. And just my, my last thought on this is that, you know, I, I stand outside watching my children play in the yard. I'm speaking to neighbors. I am constantly taken aback. And still, six months later, I mean, we're new here, but how peaceful and quiet this neighborhood is. It actually will take your breath away if you just pause for a moment and appreciate it. I've stood out there for a half an hour at a time. Not one car has gone by, and I've commented on that to neighbors. And this has been a very heartbreaking process to think of what the impact on this building and on this property might have. So, you know, I hope that you all have gotten a chance to enjoy it. And if you haven't, you know, we encourage you, ride your bikes, take a walk around, you know, Watson, Adelaide, Clark, and Payne. It is a really, really special place. So I know someone said it earlier, but I implore you to take a moment and think about your own homes and your own neighborhoods, and really, really think about the impact that a project would have on, in your own neighborhood and in your backyard. And, you know, we're all, we're all people here. You, you know, everybody is coming and sitting on the committee and volunteering their time, and we are so appreciative of that. But at the end of the day, once this is decided upon and everyone moves on in their lives, we are still in that neighborhood and in that community and are dealing with the consequences. So just my plea, you know, to really have us in mind when these decisions are being made. Thank you.
Thank you. Blaze Reed, please.
Please go ahead. Hi there. Blaze Ryan of 33 Waterway in Barrington. And I first want to say a thank you to the council, thank you to the ad hoc committee, and especially thank you to Teresa, who has been helping guide this process. And I think the ad hoc committee has been doing a great job so far of gathering community input, and that the input of those who really understand the spirit of this place, the interactions of the community here in the neighborhood that directly surrounds it, as well as the existing structure of our town and the way in which our community lives, have voiced that the existing structure should stay and the plan be developed with that in mind. As you've heard from many of the neighbors and attendees of those committees all as well through the, the voting processes earlier that that committee held. And I just, I feel that the request for this option for a vote stems from the developers' real focus on a financial return. And that a lot of our consultants on this project who might not understand the community as well, not having lived here, that they are, they may also be focused on that financial return. And there are just so many other kinds of return on an investment. For instance, kids being able to walk safely to their grandparents who might be living at this new, new development as it plays out, if that's what the community moves towards. And there's other things like carbon capture, protecting the existing trees and vegetation on the property, and having the option to demolish the, the current structure, I feel, would, would really open up to, to other kinds of removal of existing items on the property, including the natural ones. And so I, I just think that already knowing what the community wants, I don't see why the consultants are continuing to, to put up these options of, of the different spots with the building demolished. I think that they could have done the analysis anyway to provide the committee what those different costs and things would be if the building was demolished. I'm certainly concerned about the, the asbestos getting into the environment and the community, even with any kind of mitigation options. And I just, I mentioned this at a previous committee meeting, but I just think that the ad hoc committee could have worked with some design students to really gather all the community interest and develop these ideas and hear out the community. And then we could have brought that to consultants to do some sort of analysis, make sure that was right. And so I'm just a little concerned about the process. But thank you all for, for being here and listening and making sure we have a space to, to voice these concerns.
Thank you, sir. TR, please. Mr. Remeschitis.
Good evening, Tom Remeschitis, 1 Howard Street. As I sit here and listen, you know, about this whole Watson Avenue charge last year that we gave you, and you guys committed to it was 55 and older in senior housing. You know, we're trying to put all these stipulations on a piece of property. With a lot of these stipulations you're coming up with, I can't see a developer going in there. You know, we're coming up with housing plans and community plans and all that other stuff. So if we want to keep control of the property, I suggest that we leave it as is. Put it out as senior housing, which we had a problem with when we developed Pillin Chain as senior housing, and we couldn't get seniors from Barrington to live there. We had to go out of town. So I would put a proposal in that we keep it as elderly, 55 and over. Sell it as a development to that way. Fix the building that's there if they have to add on to it. I can't see that being a problem. But when we put all these other stipulations on, you're not going to attract the developer. So keep the charge at maintaining the building, not demolishing the building. Come up with your proposals as to what we can put on the land. I would just say, add on to the building if we need to, and not come up with all these other plans that everybody keeps talking about, because that wasn't the charge that you guys sold to us last year. Thank you.
Thank you, TR. Next person, Kate Burrard. Ms. Burrard, please.
Hi, yes, thank you for having me, Kate Burrard. I live at 3 Cheshire, so not close to the building, but I am on the planning board and also a member of the ad hoc committee. I just want to thank Annalise for summing up what's in front of you today. I think there's been a conflation between density and building preservation. I think a lot of the talk behind building preservation has to do with number of units as opposed to necessarily keeping the building for the building's sake. So I just, I, I always think more input is better, the more people that can make a comment or think about a decision. Have discourse here is, creates a better result. I'm one who joined the committee thinking that a bunch of little cottages would serve that parcel really well. And that's not the way the committee took its charge. So I'm taking, taking heed there. I just think that, you know, we can't conflate density with building preservation. That's the big thing that I'm hearing here. And I really appreciate all of the neighbors. A lot of people who spoke tonight also come to the ad hoc committee and share their feelings. I think the ad hoc committee has done a really good job of, of taking those comments. And instead, I think there's a lot of agreement as to green space preservation, as to understanding that having the ability to have some measure of control as we sort of create guidelines for future developer has been really important. I hear everyone's concerns. I just, I, I think the option to put out there for the town to, to consider, consider whether or not that building be demolished is really important. I'm curious as to what the seniors in our town would like to live in. Do they want to live in a multi-story building? Or do they want to live in their own separate unit? I just think it's important to, to remember that we're just creating an option and not necessarily a yes or no in either direction. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Amy Nunn.
Good evening. I'm Amy Nunn. I live at 20 Clark Road. I want to thank you all for the time that you've dedicated towards making this a really successful public space. I wanted to comment on the, both the process and the outcome. I think that there has been insufficient opportunity for community participation from the beginning. And for example, having Zoom calls where the community can't interact. So I did appreciate the movement last month at my request and the request of other people to make some of these meetings in person. And what was decided in person with much community input, we are concerned as a community that, that live around there is that it's not reflected in the decision-making and the policy outcomes. We feel that we haven't had sufficient opportunity to participate. And we also feel that our conclusions in these meetings are not at all reflected in the outcomes. So we do not feel heard, and neither in process nor in outcome, and we're deeply disappointed. I, I believe in good government, and I think we generally have good government in our town. But when there is poor communication, it undermines people's faith in the democratic process. And this needs to be much more transparent. The process needs to be slowed down a little with adequate community participation. And the reports need to reflect what is said in the meetings and your data. So I'm a data scientist, and some of the things that have been reported in the reports do not reflect what your data say. So those incongruencies need to be addressed, and they've continued as we've moved this into an in-person forum. So I'd encourage you all to do a better job of taking community input about what we prefer, and that is less density and preserving the existing structure.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Nunn. Nora Nurk and Eric Keen, please.
Hello, sorry if you can't hear me, but.
We can hear you. Please, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, Eric Keen, Nora Nurk, we've been here, well, almost over 60 years, yeah. 1958, 4 Watson Avenue. And I just wanted to let the committee know, you know, think about what would happen at the town hall if they decided 50 years after it was built, it was obsolete. So many of Barrington's assets are quite old, so we prefer keeping them. And I'd like to thank Ian, Mary, Elizabeth, David, and the other members of the council. But I'm solidly behind keeping this, the structure here across the street from us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I think that's it. So I'm going to close the public. Did you, please, go ahead, sir.
Hi, I'm Dave Pitera. I think people know me now, builder in town. And that, you know, we've discussed options. We've discussed a lot of options. And now we want to put another option on the table, which would be to demolish the building. I abut the prop. It's my backyard. By voting yes, you'll take my option away to protect my family from asbestos. My son has asthma. I have asthma, and I've seen what cancer can do. It's dangerous. And I'm really worried about it. I, I wasn't even tempted to have a cook out at my house. Invite all of you the day of the demolition. Come hang around at my house. See if you'd want to. You have to think about it that way. If this were in your backyard, would you want it demolished? That's what I get to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pitera. Sir.
Hello, my name is Ed Hallrett. I live at 6 Watson Avenue, abutting the property across the street. And I appreciate this opportunity to, to speak to the group, to the council, and to the, the public at large. I would maintain, I won't speak about the cancer epidemiology in the state. Let, let that go aside for the, for the experts. However, I would maintain that voting no to this resolution tonight does not limit your options going forward. It would in fact facilitate the process of getting the right answers and information for the community at large. Because as was indicated, we would then proceed with the designers and the architects coming up with a proposal. And that this would then be formulated through the council into an RFP, and the developers can respond or not. There's a lot of opinions here about whether they're going to respond or not. Many opinions say, well, this will never, unless we have the option to demolish, this will not attract developers. Well, let's see. Okay. And if they don't, what have you lost? Right? We can always come forward and bring this to the next town financial meeting, or put it on a, on a, as a referendum for the town. But you're not losing anything, and you're facilitating the process, and you're building the public confidence. These are important matters. Thank you.
Okay, closing public comment portion, members of the council, Vice President Hung.
Yeah, thank you. I, I have a lot of thank yous to go around. I mean, I want to thank the 25 Watson Ad hoc Committee for all the work that they've done over many, many months. It's been a public process. It's been a robust process, a lot of people involved, and a lot of hard work. So thanks to that group. And I want to thank everybody who's here tonight. I think we heard some very compelling comments tonight. Comments that we've heard before with respect to concerns that people have on, on a a host of, of issues with respect to the project. I mean, I'll, I'll just candidly tell you where, what I'm thinking on this one is from a, if, if we were sitting here at the FTM tonight, frankly, I'm inclined to agree with the folks who have spoken tonight with respect to the preservation of the building. And a part of that is, you know, our understanding going in and some of the concerns that have been raised. But that's, that's just as I sit here tonight, and that's based on the information that's in front of us tonight. And what I'm inclined to do with respect to my vote, however, is to vote to put this in front of the FTM. And the reason for that is it actually echoes a lot of what folks said tonight. There were talk, there was talk about having viable options. And as of today, demolishing the building is not a viable option because of the vote from last year's Financial Town Meeting. And our job as, as the town council and, and as members of the community, whether we're on the town council or not, is to do what we think is best with the property, get the most value out of the property for what we purchased it for. And right now, we don't know what that is, and that's what that ad hoc committee is going through. What's the best use of this property? And I, I appreciate the comments with respect to whether it needs to be done now or whether it could happen on another time. And I think we might lose two things if, if we were to wait. Number one, I think from a cost perspective, it would be more costly if we go down the road of exploring something. And then in the future, we can never demolish it. But we've now expended money, resources, people's time away from their homes, volunteering, pursuing that option that may never be a realistic opportunity. And number two, we lose that time as a town. If this were to go for another vote, whether it's in November or whether it's at next year's Financial Town Meeting, we're just that much further down the road from anything happening. And I think those are, are to me two important aspects that we would be losing if we wouldn't get an answer in the near term. And it's also important to me that we have, there was a lot of talk about community engagement. And I think Mr. Castell said something earlier about the, the community engagement that. And I think Mr. Castell said something earlier about the the community engagement that putting this in front of the Financial Town meeting would provide. I would encourage everybody here tonight, please come to the Financial Town Meeting, say what you said tonight, because I found it compelling. I thought that you you were very poignant, you were very respectful, and thank you for for doing so. At the Financial Town Meeting, it's just presenting options, and that often could get shot down. It it could be a ninety to ten vote, and everybody else could tell us, you guys are crazy. Last year, you said you were going to preserve the property, so town council, go away, you're you're confusing us, you're making us upset. That could be the outcome of the vote at the Financial Town Meeting. But I think the the greater public should have the opportunity to say that and to make that determination with respect to transparency, with respect to particip- participation. And then that should help to inform the process as it moves forward for what the ad hoc committee is doing. And and then some ultimate decisions that we might be making in the future. So that's where I stand on this, I'm probably missing some things out, but maybe I'll I'll chime in again if I can remember what they are, so thank you.
Councilor Brier.
That actually covered a lot of the points I I wanted to make. But I had just one more that I wanted to add, which was about the asbestos specifically. I think it's a it's a concern even with renovating the building in addition to demolishing. And it's something that we have to make sure that we get the right developer in place that's going to take care of it professionally, adequately, and and be sure that whether it's renovation or demolition, that it's done well. And I think we do that by making sure that we make this project as attractive as possible to developers. And that includes giving them as much flexibility as as we think is warranted. TR said, you know, putting too many, putting too many restrictions on this would be problematic. And I think this is eliminating the potential restriction, not adding a new one. I don't I don't necessarily think that the building should be demolished, but I do think going forward, having the opportunity to look at it seriously is is important to make sure that we get to the right final outcome.
Thank you. Anyone else? One second. I would say a couple of things. We're not done by a long shot. This is a step along the way. Whatever happens tonight, whatever happens at this upcoming FTM, by law, we're going to be back at an FTM when we get to the stage of turning it over to a developer. The town at an FTM has to approve that kind of sale. So we're not done yet, there's there's still a lot of work to be done. From sort of from the beginning and through today, my goals for this property are pretty straightforward. Control of the property, senior housing and affordable housing. Control of the property, I don't think people have grasped how much that is, we've already got it, so we don't need to spend a lot of time on it. But I think there's almost no chance there would be nine buildings. Because under our laws, under state law, affordable housing and under our regs, you gotta have twenty or twenty-five percent affordable. When you put in affordable, you can get a density bonus. That means you can put more houses than what the zoning calls for. So under state law, possibly a developer might might have put nine houses, but only if that developer wanted to leave money on the table. So that's, we've got control, and I think that's a great thing. Senior housing, I think we've had a desperate need of it, it's been in our, it's been in our comp plan for a long time. We've been hoping and hoping for one project, but we didn't have control of that, so we couldn't put it there. And affordable housing, they're not incompatible. You can have something that's a hundred percent senior housing. And it would have to be a minimum of twenty percent as a floor affordable for seniors. But I I would like to see substantially more than that. You know, in terms of what to put there, that that's really, people know a lot more than that about that than I do. So I don't, I don't really have a strong opinion on that. I will say that I went up to that third floor in that building. And that view of Narragansett Bay, that that'll sell itself. I mean, that that's a beautiful, beautiful view. And I think, you know, there's your market rate place. Somebody comes in because they have this magnificent view. And that helps to pay for the affordable housing that may be looking into the neighborhood or something. But we did say last year, we were asked specifically, both Mike or Sillow and myself, what happens if you have to tear the building down because it, for whatever reason? And we both said, well, we'd have to come back to the FTM. So we're going back to the FTM not to decide to tear it down, but to open that option up to be able to get the approval of the FTM to do that. You know, I'd be fine with leaving it, leaving that building and and adding on. One of the things we learned is structurally, you can't really cut into it, so you'd need to add on at least for elevators and for things like that. But I do think this is a democracy, so we ought to give people a chance to to decide this. There's a lot of strong opinions here. There are a lot of people who feel very strongly that the building should be preserved. You know, that kind of passion on that issue, I think you could get out the vote, I think you could probably win this at the at the FTM. I don't know how many people feel that strongly about tearing it down. So, you know, this just helps us define our path going forward. So that's that's my view, and I don't know if anybody else wants to add anything or if we're ready to vote. So I will make a motion to approve placing a resolution for vote at the May twenty-fifth Financial Town Meeting that includes the following language, be it resolved that the town council in requesting and choosing proposals to redevelop the land, the town-owned property located at twenty-five Watson Avenue, assessors plat seven lot four, formerly known as Carmen Lake Monastery, the property shall have the option to physically modify, including renovate, expand, or partially or fully demolish any of the buildings on the property. Is there a second? Second. Motion's made and seconded for the discussion. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And no abstentions, that motion carries. Thank you, and thank you all for your input tonight. Next item on the agenda is to discuss and act on the request to repave the senior center parking lot. This came from the senior advisory board. And if we can unmute, or if Alan Corby can unmute himself. Alan, is this, have you taken a look at this and does this look like a something that we ought to do?
Well, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, the the parking lot is in tough shape. And it is something we should consider. At this point right now, you know, it's just a matter of funding and and making sure we have the funds to do it. So it's something, you know, next time we we do a road paving job, I would recommend we we include this also.
So as part of the twenty eighteen roadway bond, you think?
It it could be, it just, you know, I wasn't sure about the wording because the bond was approved for road sidewalks, drainage, for town streets, and just to make sure that everyone's aware of it, to include it. Right now, we don't have a project going out to bid. Contract, paving contracts are, as you would imagine with the price of asphalt, everything's a little crazy right now, I would recommend we go to bid next year and do some roadwork. And we have about a million dollars left in that contract, and and I'm sorry, the the bond.
Okay. And the question, though, is whether the roadway bond can be used for a parking lot?
Correct.
You're not certain about that, okay. Cost could be around two hundred thousand dollars. So what is the plan for paving for this this summer? Are you thinking no paving for the summer?
Yeah, we're we're gonna hold off this year, we're trying to catch up on some roadwork, like drainage work and and pipe work. And then, you know, put a good list of streets together and then go before the council next year with a list of streets to pave.
Okay. Questions from the council, please.
Is it, is it not financially feasible to pave just the parking lot, not as part of a larger project?
You could do the parking lot independently. It's just that economy's a scale, I'd recommend you do it with a road paving job. It's just a mobilization to to get a paving contractor to come into town. You might as well do a road job and and you'll get a better price, I think, on the per ton.
Are there, are there temporary measures that can be taken to patch some of the particularly rough areas? Because it is a safety issue, not just, you know, bumpy roads.
Yeah, that's our intent, we're gonna go in and patch and make sure it's safe for this year. But I, you know, we're also gonna look at the drainage for next year to make sure near the handicap ramp, we'd like to do some modifications in the future for next year. So possibly running a catch basin to that area if we can get some free time this year to get it done. And and I think that would help the situation, so it gives us a little lead time to get some roadwork done, I'm sorry, parking lot work done with the drainage.
Okay. Please.
I would just echo that concern, that was also my concern. I understand what what you're saying, Mr. Corby. Just as a matter of safety, I certainly wouldn't want us to delay and and then have a senior take a fall they shouldn't take in in that parking lot. So, you know, if there's any question of safety, then then we should, we should know about that. But if it can be patched, then so be it.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, does anyone want to make a motion to to repave this? Please.
The Chair of the Senior Services Advisory Board is here.
Please.
I wondered if she wants to speak.
Please come on forward.
Good evening, my name is Erin Paca, I'm the Chair of the Senior Services Advisory Board. I'm just here on behalf of the board to briefly reiterate what's in the letter. We wanted to thank the town for all the work that's been done at the back center, it's beautiful. Michelle Drummond and her staff have done an incredible job making it welcoming. And I'm just so impressed every time I go in there. But she has had concerns from people who use the center and express those to the board about the safety of the parking lot and of the access ramp. And I really appreciate the town taking that seriously and obviously already doing some discussion about how we might alleviate those problems. I just wanted to reiterate that I think the parking lot particularly is very uneven. And I've experienced it walking in and out of meetings, and I don't have any mobility issues. So I think it really is a safety concern that we wanted everyone to be aware of. The other issue is the access ramp, which thankfully it's summer, so it won't be an issue again until the winter. But when it freezes over in the winter, it's not just a minor amount of ice, it's covered in sheets of ice. And Michelle has to shut it down for long periods of time, which means that seniors cannot get in from the parking lot at the back center, they have to go to the library, walk all the way in, come down, walk all the way to the senior center, which for someone who has mobility issues is a long way. So I just hope the board will take into account those safety concerns, with council, sorry, those safety concerns and consider our thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. I see Kate Barrard would, has her hand raised, and so if we could unmute her? Oh, oh, she took her hand down, okay, I think that was a legacy hand raise, so. Any further discussion on this? Does anyone want to make a motion? Oh, please go ahead.
Okay, what what specific measures can we take to address the concerns we just we just heard? And can we adequately address them in in a short timeframe?
The issue with the ramp is a little more technical, it's it's not as easy. What happens is that side of the building, the building, as you know, is an old building, it has wood gutters. And the gutters were built to pitch the water to that general location. The ramp itself was constructed with ADA accessibility in mind. It cannot exceed one-on-twelve pitch. So what happens is the length of the ramp gets extended every time the height differential drop increases. So you could have a very long ramp to achieve the goal of trying to get the person from a wheelchair out of the building. And in doing so, you have to run it along the side of the building. The building with snow and the freeze thaw cycle causes a drip problem. And when the roof was redone, the gutters were not included with the original wood gutters, because they're still in good shape. But that's where the water is generally brought to. It'd be a very costly job to reroute the gutters. And it's not just bringing in your local gutter company and slapping up some aluminum gutters, they're historic gutters. We looked at possibly a canopy over the ramp, looked at bringing the ramp out of that area, but as you can imagine, the ramp is not just two inches of asphalt, it's it's over a foot of concrete thick, it's a foot, over foot concrete. The eighteen inches, you know, even twenty-four inches in some areas, this is a big job. So it it's not like a silver bullet's gonna solve it. We need to look at it, a dry well was installed seven years ago. And the downspouts were rerouted to the dry well. But it's like I said, it's that freeze thaw cycle on the side of the building. And you'll see the drip as it comes down, and Michelle, if you want to add to it, go ahead. But, you know, it it's it's a very difficult situation. And it's not to say it can't be corrected, it's it's how much money will will be needed to correct it. And that's not really part of the road bond, but it's what we can do to try to alleviate things and make things better.
So in terms of the the ramp, and sorry, just a just a suggestion, what about heating the ramp? Heating the pavement so it doesn't freeze?
You know, that's a possibility, we'd have to still dig up the ramp and and run coils or at least look at breaking away the surface and running coils and electrical, you know, wiring and whatnot. But there are, there are options, and they're similar to that, you know, it may be something that that has to be done. But it's certainly, it's it's, like I said, it's more of a freeze thaw situation with the roof and 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 snow. And when the sun hits that side of the building, and Michelle, if you want to add to it, it's basically what causes it, so you get that, the the daytime, it causes the melt. And then as as it gets colder, it freezes on the ground, and it does cause a situation. And that's why they're using a lot of ice melt to try to alleviate it.
Can I add something?
Sure, please, go ahead.
Okay, so the the problem with the ramp is, as Alan has said, but the other problem is that you have huge icicles forming right overhead at the edge of the building. So you'll have a whole section where there are these huge icicles, and not only are they dripping, but my concern is more that as they drip, and first of all, a senior could slip on the ramp, that's a danger, but an icicle could fall on a senior as well. I mean, we're not talking little icicles, we're talking really huge icicles. So I I do understand all of the constraints and the costliness of everything. I just want the town council to be aware of what the issues are.
I mean, to add to this, it may be something we want to bring an architect in to look at. And, you know, to 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 give us some ideas, and maybe it's rerouting the gutter system, or as Michelle said, it's it's a combination, maybe we look at a canopy over over the walkway. And and that way, it's also good for rainy days that the seniors are protected. But it's, it's it's not something that's gonna be, you know, like a a thousand dollar item that easily. It's 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 a little difficult, it's it's not to say it can't be solved, it's just, how do we want to solve it? How much it's gonna cost? And if it's something that, you know, maybe we look at, you know, some architectural canopy that will cover the, I don't know if, Michelle, if that's something you're looking at where, you know, it might be the best thing, and that way, the the senior's protected even on a rainy day like right now, it's raining. You know, they can leave the building and and they're in good shape, so.
Right, something like that might be good.
So in in terms of the parking lot, though, can you, can your folks go through it? So in, in terms of, um, the parking lot though, can you, can your folks go through it and. Patch the holes and try to address these things, even if it's, uh, patching? For now with the idea of repaving it next year?
Yes, we, we were, um, we had a drainage issue, um, a pipe that handles the outflow from Woods Pond. That brings it, the, the drainage from Woods, well, the drainage from County Road goes to Woods Pond, Woods Pond or portion of County Road. Woods Pond then drains through an outlet structure with a, with a grade on it. You can see it if you go to Woods Pond. That then flows to the Barrington River and that, at that location through the parking lot is where the pipe discharges through. And we actually had a sinkhole form and we did a little exploring to try to fi- fix it. It's a very deep pipe. It's a, it's at least fifteen feet deep below the grade. So it, it's, it's a job over there to bring it. Um, cause just imagine where the pipe is leaving Woods Pond, the elevation of the parking lot. So it's a very deep pipe. So, um, you know, we did do some improvements. We can fix it. We can patch the area, um, and make sure the area is safe. But it is something I'd recommend next year, we, we, we put on a paving list.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, comments, please, Councilor Brown?
Just to, to add to what you've been saying, if, if we can look at what a solution would be for the ice issue on the ramp. Um, is that something you think we could look into and have a potential solution for next winter?
Um, you know, like, like I said, I mean, if we're looking at a camp, canopy, I would recommend we bring an architect in or someone to, to design it properly. I mean, ADA i- is, is a critical factor here. So we have to make sure this isn't just a backdoor entrance. This is, um, this is an important entrance and, and I think we may need to bring somebody in. But it's a little beyond, um, like, uh, you know, just a DPW canopy, just, you know, putting some plywood and. Uh, four by four posts with, uh, some roof shingles. This might be something that I think's a little bit, uh, intricate. If we have a historic building, um, it's something that, uh, you know, it, it may, it may take a little while. It may take someone to come in and look at what's the solution here.
Okay. Okay, um, well, there, there is a item before us. Does anyone wanna make that motion?
I'll move to approve the utilization of funding from the town's twenty eighteen roadway bond for the repaving of the PEC Center for Adult Enrichment Parking Lot.
Motion's made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay, I'm opposed. Uh, but that motion carries four to one. Um. The next item on the agenda is to discuss an act on a landlord consent to the cell tower lease agreement. Yes. Yes.
They have to vote to do that.
Yeah.
To continue it actually to the next meeting.
Yeah, so, um, w- we'd like to get some more, um, feedback on this before we, um, vote on it. So, um, unless anyone objects, I'd like to continue this to our next meeting.
No objection.
Okay, I'll make a motion to continue this matter to our next meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Um, next item is to discuss an act on the middle school, uh, on reallocating unspent middle school bond balance. And we have a new resolution for that. Which I, I found, uh, to be very clear, um, in terms of the dollars that we're talking about and, you know, the amounts. I. Um. I, um, our town manager has asked that we, uh, address within this. The idea of cer- being able to use some of the funding for climate resilience mitigation projects. You know. I, my own view is, um. And what I was trying to convey when we held that meeting on the, on, uh, climate mitigation is that. W- we've gotta face facts. This is, um, you know, w- we're looking at a storm coming. Um, and we're gonna have to start putting our money where our mouth is. We've, I think we've done as much as we can, uh, with, uh, grant money. Fantastic job by Teresa and Kim and Phil, uh, to get grant money for these projects. But it's gonna start costing money and we definitely know that the money spent now is worth a multiple of the money spent after the storm, trying to recover. So. I'm, I'm fine with keeping this as a clean motion, um, for, as it is for, um, streets and sidewalks. And then when we need the money, we will ask for the, the, the money, um, that we need. We, we also have some, uh, ARPA money that we could use for, for that. But open it up, please.
I have a procedural question on, on this. For the FTM, can we only present yes or no questions? Or can it be multiple choice, A, B, C?
Yeah, you, you could have a multiple choice, so to speak, and people can vote. Uh, it, it would definitely require the moderator, obviously, to ask how many of you in favor of option one? How many of you in favor of option two?
So, so we could in theory do, um, sort of a, put both option one and option two on the FTM agenda. And I guess option three being, don't, don't use the money for anything, um, which is still, you know, it, that's. If we choose just one of these, that's, that's the alternative.
Um, yeah, it, yeah, it's gonna be confusing. It's got, you know, I, I do agree with President Carroll's comments. We should keep it simple and straightforward and, and then from there, talk about. I, I foresee the day when you're going to have a line item in the FTM for resiliency efforts. I, I think that's inevitable. It's not just Barrington, Warren, Bristol. You're all gonna have South Kingstown. We're all gonna have to address this. So keeping it simple at the FTM would make, um, a lot of sense. But there's legally, there'd be nothing to prevent you from putting more than one option before the voters.
And then also curious if by the FTM, we would know what streets if, or if any, um, have been identified? To, to receive either sidewalks, bike lanes, things of that nature. So that when folks are voting, um, they, they know specifically the, the projects, at least some of them.
Um, Phil, we have a listing, do we, uh, of, of potential projects? I mean, I know we've talked a lot about, um, Lincoln.
Right.
But, but, uh, we heard, uh, about federal from, uh, Dr. Bonjory just at the outset of the meeting.
Right.
Uh, is there a listing of, of streets that are in need of, of this?
It's, uh, basically described in the complete streets plan that is ninety-eight percent finished. Um, and that would include Lincoln Avenue, rebuilding that and making, making that safe. Um, that's being a priority, especially since it's, um, addressing issues around schools. Um, Federal Road also was highlighted as a priority area. And that would include probably modifying that intersection with Middle Highway, given the speeds that vehicles can travel making those turns. Um, and, and making a safe crossing there. There, there are needs also on Veyce Spring Avenue and Middle, um, Maple Avenue. And there are limited options outside of town roads. I mean, um, th- those areas in Hampton Meadows, cause most of those are state roads. But there's also, there's a sidewalk on Lampton that has many tripping hazards and it's getting up. It's getting heaved up with roots from trees. And so that's a very problematic sidewalk near a school as well. So that's an idea of some of the priority areas. Um, also, this would be an opportunity to do something about South Lake Drive becoming a multi-use path. That would fit within the, the idea of bike and pedestrian improvements.
Did that address your question?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I, I just wanted to, um, it kind of addresses what Mr. Brier said, but I'm, I'm glad that Mr. Rosillo jumped in. I was gonna say, uh, essentially something along this, those same lines and I'm in favor of simplifying the vote and sticking to the. Um, the safety and recreational infrastructure projects that are in front of us, um, for biking and pedestrians. I think that's, uh, climate mitigation is a significant priority, the, the key priority, I think, for this council. But as, as Mr. Rosillo summed up and, um, it, maybe some others, or maybe I'm forgetting and it's blending into each other. But it, it's going to be there and there's going to be actionable items, um, specific items on that, I think, going forward. Um, i- if, if we were to, uh, suggest that a certain amount go, uh, to be voted and, and put into a, some sort of climate mitigation reserve. It, it sounds a little general to me and there's really no direction there. Whereas there has been a lot of discussion with respect to sidewalks. It's an ongoing recurring issue. It's a safety issue, significant safety issue, not just for recreational pedestrians and, and bicyclists, but for people getting to school. We had the speaker today, um, I think, kinda really hammered that home. And I'm, I'm glad Mr. Herbie went over the, uh, the list of some of the key streets, which seems to be right in, in those same areas. So, um, for all those reasons, I'm in favor of, um, I think, keeping the resolution as is and, and dedicating it for the safety. Um, pedestrian and, and bicyclist recreational issues.
Anyone else?
I, I would echo the comments of Vice President Hum. I think that, you know, let's, beyond notice, we are, we are definitely going to be coming back. Uh, with regard to resiliency issues, that is the number one priority. But we do have a structure in place and priorities in place that we can, that we can execute on efficiently. And we can also communicate to the public what those priorities will be specifically and is, as was just done. And so, um, I would echo the, the comments I've heard from my, from my colleague just now and, and, and support that, uh, clean number one motion as well.
Does anyone want to make a motion at this time?
I will move. To approve placing the resolution as presented before voters at the financial town meeting. Re-appropriating unspent Barrington Middle School bond proceeds to a new capital reserve account for pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure improvements.
Second. Motion's made and seconded for the discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Um. Uh. Let's go on. Next item is to discuss an act on the Rhode Island Cannabis Act legislation. Um, so. Um, w- we, we spent a lot of time on an important issue. Uh, there's not a ton of people, um, watching anymore. Um, one of the things. That I think is important to, to get a sense of, this is unusual for us. It's not streets, roads and streets. This is a, a different kind of thing. Um, I, I'd like to get more public input. And so my suggestion is that we, we talk about this a little bit tonight, but we, we try to get, um. Our fourth estate to write an article about this so that we can get more people. I think we have to decide this for the June meeting because we need to either, if we say we don't want, uh, cannabis license in town. If we say that, then under the current bills, um, that goes to a vote and we have to put it on the, um. Uh, on the ballot for November. And there's a certain time lag in doing that. So we wanna make sure our clerk has that time. But, uh, so, so that would give people a vote. If we say we do want cannabis licensing in town, that does not give our, our folks a vote. Cause that would just be automatically granted under the current bills. Um, so I, I think it's worth kinda getting, uh, some feedback from, from folks, uh, who will be impacted by this. Um, but I do think it, it's worthwhile for us to talk about it a little bit because, um. You know, we wanna lay out for people for next month, what's, what's at stake. My own view is that, um. Well-regulated, safe cannabis is fine. Um, my concern is that in Barrington. If, if we see some of the things that we saw in Massachusetts, when they, when they legalized it. We could see a lot of, uh, traffic congestion, um, around wherever the site is. So we'd need to be careful about that. But otherwise, uh, I'm in favor of, uh, getting a license. And I just, I think people ought to know that so that if they feel strongly and they're opposed, they can come and try and talk me out of it. And maybe talk my colleagues out of it or into it, uh, one way or the other. Um, but we would like to get some, some public input. How does everybody else feel about it? Vice President Hum?
Thank you. Just gonna address for now and I'll, I'll reserve on the larger discussion. But I, I, um, I concur with, uh, having this on the June agenda. I, I think I might've mentioned last one too, that we really need a lot of public engagement here. And in fact, looking at the, the two motions that the planning board put together, and thanks to the planning board for, for looking at this. They actually recommend that it be on the June agenda. And in their motion to refer it to the Bay Team, they ask for, um, wide publicity, that it be widely publicized or advertised. Um, I don't know if that's happened. I haven't seen anything personally and we have nobody here. Um, I, I would love for there to be lots of public engagement, lots of public comment on this. And I know we're asking for a late meeting, but I, I, I think that's what we're here for. And I think that's, you know, this is an issue that I think people need to weigh in on, um, from all different, um, interests and groups and levels. So, um, you know, I, I encourage the town to get the, the, the word out in whatever, um, ways that we can do that. Um, you know, if the, the paper can write an article about it, um, that would be great too. If, if you're watching, um, Mr. Pickering and Mr. Bigford, it would be great if you can write an article on this. Um, so that we can just get public engagement and, um, people can weigh in one way or another. So.
Councilor Brown?
Yeah, I, I too, um, noted the, both the EDC and the planning board, um, both, both asked for public hearings on this. And I think that, that makes a lot of sense. Um, like President Carroll, I, I think it would be good not, not to opt out, not to have a prohibition. I'm not necessarily opposed to having a referendum, um, because I also think that that's a powerful form of democracy. But I think we also need to look at the larger picture and make sure that if it were to go to a referendum. That, that the vote would be based on all the accurate information being out there. Um, based on considering the pros and cons of opting out and what that means. Because this isn't whether or not recreational cannabis is allowed in Barrington. It's only whether or not it can be sold in Barrington. And so, um, yeah. So I, I think having that public hearing would, would make it clear what exactly the referendum would be doing. Uh, and I think that's an important step. And then we can decide whether or not to have the referendum.
I would, I would agree. I echo that, um, that comment. I think the other piece of it is whether or not we're eligible to get, um, tax revenue from sale of cannabis and other locations if we do. So if we, if we were, um. Prohibiting any sale in town, and I do think that it's really important to have the EDC, the planning board and debate team all involved. And perhaps to bring their own, um, constituencies and individuals in to have a conversation. Um, has there been a suggestion to have an ad hoc committee for? Any of these concerns or issues? Because as this is rolled out, assuming that it does. There, there may be an opportunity to have more public input that happens similar to Watson, where we have more engagement and involvement from. Bay Team, EDC and Planning Board, just throwing that out there.
Yeah, so, um, I think in terms of the, the timing of the, the sort of go-no-go, the yes or no piece of it. I don't think there's enough time for that. But if, if it's a yes, either from us or after a referendum. I mean, there are some key facts, key, key decisions that you made in terms of zoning, as I mentioned. You know, where are you gonna have it? Is it gonna be in a neighborhood business district or is it gonna be only in a full business district? What, what places in town, um, would we approve for it, uh, if, if there was to be a license? So that makes sense to, to kinda bring together EDC and, um. And Bay Team maybe to, to begin to, to talk about those things.
Mostly around the implementation. Mostly around the implementation. I'm thinking it works of a new it's a new class of
Yeah.
Mentioned reminded me about a question I had. I know that if Barrington prohibits retail sales, we get no revenue. If we remain eligible, if we if we don't opt out, but nobody pulls a license and opens shop, we also don't get revenue. That's it's fair. It's fair, but disappointed.
Doesn't mean it's some future point though, someone might decide.
Right.
Yeah.
I I'm inclined to think that uh we we also should consider our police chief's view on this and he did cite a study out of Colorado, which had some some impacts that are are questionable. I think it is incumbent upon all of us to um to get the facts straight as to what the impact has been on communities where they where they have opened. I uh certainly agree with decriminalization. That's not on the table here. And I I think that if it is closed, if we have a large turnout and we get a a real uh uh spirited public debate, then my inclination is that this is a pretty simple item to put on a on a referendum. I mean, you know, when we're talking about a specific climate resiliency project or when we're talking about a tax structure, those aren't always subject to a good referendum because you 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 need people to have a a clear up or down vote on something without nuance. This really doesn't have much nuance. And so if there is a divided public opinion on this, then my inclination is to go that that direction. Now, I know, I mean, I'm the liaison to the EDC and they're looking for tax revenue and they're concerned about um maybe missing out on licenses if we don't move quickly enough. And and that's a fair concern. I understand that as well. But uh just to so sort of say where where I am right now, I definitely agree this should be on the June agenda. We want to get some publicity publicity for it. But I I if we don't get a clear message out of it, I think it is something the community should decide. Um I know there's a, you know, maybe the character of a community is a quaint notion, but I think the chief cites some some legitimate concerns that we also should be aware of.
So Phil, can we get that on uh sort of maybe on the banner or something like that? And out on social media? Just so that people know there's a discussion uh going to be had uh next month.
Absolutely, and a press release as well.
Great. Great. Oh, uh Kate Barard, please.
Hi, thank you. My only comment is the planning board had um I believe directed the town council to let staff start working on zoning um issues or any sort of restrictions. I don't know if that's on the table today or that's something that gets pushed to June.
Um I think I think we could probably do that in June too. I I my my guess is um you know, we're not we don't even know if these bills are going to pass. I I think they will. Uh that's the way it it looks like it's going.
Concerned council was just that I had planning, what was it you you'd be behind the eight ball if and if in fact, we're going forward, you wanted some advance work done on this or to put this on your agenda? Could you extrapolate on that?
Sure. Um I personally, professionally had the privilege of working on some um cannabis licenses in the previous time as an attorney with a a local attorney who does that professionally and there are a lot of towns that um put a lot of language into their restrictions. While they might allow it in a certain zone, it's restricted as to the you know, how far it is from a school, how far it is from a playground, the lights, the hours of operation. There's just a lot of pieces that fall into that. Um so I think the more time that staff is allowed to spend on that, the better. No matter if it moves forward or not, um I just think being behind the eight ball uh come the vote time is never a good place to be. I think preparation is important and if we can direct staff to start looking at those items now, it would be a better case. My understanding and the solicitor can say if I'm wrong, we can't just say no without the referendum. So if we come to that vote, we don't have the appropriate zoning in place, if someone makes that application, it's based on the law that's on the books currently. So I think being unprepared or allowing only a couple of months to make those changes is just not uh putting us in the best position.
And and I suppose that process in itself could be illuminating and informative as to what we do on the overall question.
Right. So this is um discuss an act on like that yet. So um first, I think without even taking a vote, or we can just sort of get the sense of the council, um we could ask our solicitor to begin blocking out some zoning regs. Amy in my office is actually working on that across the board, so. Okay. So we have that as a sort of starting place um with um uh Annalise suggested a kind of ad hoc committee. I I I could think of some stakeholders um in terms of EDC and Bay team. But can we think of other other committees to start with who should be weighing in on this planning board? Uh because it's we're talking about a change to zoning.
Representative Barrington Police Department?
Yeah. Yeah.
Zoning board?
Zoning board?
Because it could be a special use permit.
Uh TR would like to be heard. TR, please, go ahead.
Hello again. Um you know, some of the comments that you were making earlier about overcrowding and all that other good stuff. That might have happened in the beginning, but if you go to C Con, there's two cannabis stores that are open. I go buy them quite a bit when I work part-time. And you might see one or two cars in there at any given time. It's not like people are rushing out to get it. You know, I was always never in favor of cannabis and all that other stuff, but I know a lot of people that do it. And if the recreational law passes, I think you're going to see a lot more people start growing it and you know, we're going to miss out the opportunity for those people that can't grow it to buy it closer to home. You know, it's a little bit of a tax savings or a little bit of a tax revenue for the town. Instead of them going to Massachusetts to buy it, even though you're not supposed to come across the town, the state lines with it right now. But if it gets approved, I can't see that being a what's the word I'm looking for? A deterrent, maybe?
Yeah.
So I I think on the other hand, we seem to form a ton of ad hoc committees when something doesn't want to get passed. Just take the motion and go with your gut. Don't form an ad hoc committee because a lot of it's a waste of time. I spent two years on one that you guys tabled and hopefully we can get it to come back in the forerun. But I wouldn't go with another ad hoc committee. Usually got go with the feeling. We have no tax revenue really in this town. What we do is very little and we don't do much to support businesses as it is now. That we're always going through all kinds of hoops to get certain signs and everything else. But yeah, on other hands, we do stuff that we go against, but we do it. So I would just vote on it and and go with your gut now. Don't form the ad hoc committee.
Thank you, TR. I appreciate you uh overcoming your shyness for that. Um I would disagree with you on the signs. We fixed that. Years ago, we fixed that. It's now administrative process for most signs. So you know, if you want to open a business, we've made it a lot easier. You know, ad ad hoc committees, yeah, I I don't think we're we're trying to kill this project. It's not really it would ultimately be up to the voters if we did want to kill it. But the question is, you know, zoning stuff. I'm glad that Mike is already working on that, but how do we feel about an ad hoc committee?
I I'm inclined to do it, but it's it's got, obviously, it's it's a short, quick process. We'd have to put together fairly fairly quickly. We need we need some kind of an answer. We need that kind of input. Um I I think it could only it it can only give us more facts um and information going into what I think is a a June meeting where we really do want the public engagement and therefore we're going to do it anyways. So if we can do this quickly, then uh then it makes a lot of sense to me. It it there's no negative to that. This isn't slow walking as 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 my friend TR suggested. Um because we have a, we have an end date and it's there's going to be a, this will be on the agenda for June.
Yeah, and and I think also uh we'd be really looking at a deadline for zoning uh laws for like October, uh November. We're not I mean, if if it passes as is, um then the earliest they'd be issuing licenses, I think, would be after November.
Question about that, Mike? Um is is, I mean, I I hope, I think you're, I think that's correct, but do you know how early those licenses would go?
I I honestly don't know. Um other than what I've read in the media about the process was going to begin before the um the election, but I don't think any decisions are going to be made till after. I mean, it wouldn't make sense for those decisions to be made. And given how long it has taken with awarding licenses on the medical marijuana side of things, I I'd be really surprised if recreational marijuana licenses would go faster.
The the one thing we run into is with with ongoing meetings, um you know, the committees wouldn't be selecting their own members. I suppose town manager or someone would have to, you'd have, we'd have to form, right? I mean,
Yeah.
I mean, the police department could do that easily, but but others would have, would, you know, they don't have meetings, me. Except planning tomorrow night.
Yeah, that's right. So how do please go ahead.
What about rather than forming an ad hoc committee, just scheduling um a workshop to talk about the zoning implications and contact the chairs of each of these groups and say, can you or a representative from your committee attend this meeting? That's something we might be able to make happen before our June meeting, which could then help inform that discussion. And then it would also inform, does this need further explanation or is it, you know, cut and dry enough that that with this discussion, we know what the zoning parameters are that we would want?
Mike Rosillo, do you think Amy would be able to have, um I mean, I'm talking about blocked out. Because there, I'm sure there's going to be a lot of input uh changing it, some zoning regs for this. Absolutely. We we could, we could produce that in the next week. So I I think that that makes a lot of sense to have um a workshop where we uh invite the chairs or their designee or something like that. Um uh representative from the police department and anybody else who wants to come.
And here a whole committee could could come. They would just have to post the meeting.
Yeah, yeah. And you know, folks in the public, uh I would encourage members of the public to come too, because we'd like to hear from you. So um uh does that sound like a plan? We'll we'll ask Mary to send around dates to see when we can do a workshop and try and get contact members of each uh of those committees, planning, zoning, EDC, Bay team and a representative from the police department. I can't think of anybody else. And Mary, when you send that doodle poll out, so to speak, could you include my office too? Because I'd like Amy to be at that meeting.
If if there's no action to be taken, can a meeting be remote?
Yeah, okay. Well, you can't be remote, everyone else, yes. Yeah.
Workshop is with the town council with invitees from those various groups. But as Councilman Brier said, if the entire planning board wants to come, let's say, that would have to be posted.
They would have to.
And they would, and they would have to be in person. Okay.
But if individuals less than a quorum of the planning or zoning board, that would be fine. We'll we'll work together, Mary. Uh so we need to, I mean, we we can just put this on the agenda for next month. Do we need to take a vote? So is the the meeting, the workshop, you've already directed Mary to send out and then we can advertise that well within the forty-eight hours. Um if you want, you can just continue this whole item to next month. Next month's agenda. Want to have more discussion on this, I'm going to make a motion to continue um this matter, this item on the agenda. Item, what is this? Twenty-two. To next month's agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Made in second, are all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay.
Before we get to the next agenda item, um I'd like to propose something. Uh we have some members of the community, I think, a few agenda items down and we have very few people um present uh here, including um maybe a high school student who might either have some homework or need to get home. Um but I I propose that we move at least the introduction of um the litter ordinance um in front of the current number twenty-three on the agenda. So that we could accommodate the folks in the room.
Okay, uh is there any objection to that? Okay, without objection, uh we'll go back to item twenty-three. But we'll go to item twenty-four. And we are introducing uh two ordinances. The first one is item uh is two thousand twenty-two dash five, an ordinance amendment to chapter one forty-four public lands use of section one forty-four dash seventeen, littering prohibited in chapter one thirty-four parks and recreation. Article one, general regulation, section one thirty-four dash three rubbish. So would anyone like to be heard on that? Please come forward.
Um my name is Max Dunn. I'm the student representative for the Parks and Recreation Commission Commission. And uh we've been working on like the, everybody knows like the middle school basketball courts have been collecting a lot of trash, so recently they put in a trash can, which should help. So we'll see how that does. We've also been working on like a potential ordinance that would institute a fine for anybody who's caught littering because right now there is none for like small fines, only for like big dumping. So hopefully that will just uh discourage Jenny buddy from littering from the courts. So thank you.
Right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dunn. That um so the the matter that Mr. Dunn's committee uh put forward, I think, was to have a fine of a certain amount for the first offense. This this um draft uh ordinance has a warning for the first offense. So that that's the distinction, but I think we can address that at the next meeting.
Please go ahead. Thank you. I I think you're right about the distinction and thank you, Mr. Dunn, for for presenting um what the, just so folks know, and I'm I'm going to be proposing this for the next um meeting, when you see the uh version of this uh ordinance again, is instead of the first offense being a warning and then the incremental penalties, uh the Parks and Rec Commission is recommending that the first offense be fifty dollars, second offense be one hundred dollars, and I think they said the third offense be two hundred dollars. And the reasoning is um, look, this is an ordinance where it's 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 a litter ordinance. It's not a uh uh an egregious criminal activity, but it's a nuisance. And um I would assume that um the Barrington Police, if if they're out enforcing this particular ordinance, they're not just going to walk around throwing out tickets saying fifty dollars to you, fifty dollars to you, fifty dollars to you. Like, I I I'm envisioning, you know, maybe a conversation or a couple of warnings um before we get to that. But if it does get to it and we do need to enforce the ordinance, then you know, for it to have some keep, um it would need at least some sort of monetary sanction. And I think that's what the Parks and Rec Commission i- is recommending. Um again, envisioning that that those warnings could come kind of outside the ordinance, if you will. So in any event.
Okay. So yes.
I had a question, we had a question about on fines, because I guess the town lawyer did not have fines. So the popular story was one to add fines and wanted us to only put because it's been a serious problem. They all be like, it should not be closed. So between cameras, police involvement, I'm gonna camp and try that.
Okay.
Commission thought, we had, we had a question tonight was, why was there no fines in the ordinance? We didn't know why, so I was I'm trying to find out why there was no fines initially.
Okay, um when we vote on the ordinance at our next meeting, assuming it's introduced, uh we can certainly amend it to change that back. Thank you, Mr. Rico. Councilor Brian.
So I think um if if fines are the way to go, they're they're the way to go, but it's it's probably mostly youth doing this. And so fines, especially as a as a first measure, I think, is a bit heavy, but but I'm not necessarily opposed to it. I know we have a carry-in, carry-out policy. I couldn't find I know we have a carry-in, carry-out policy. I couldn't find that in our ordinances. Is that an ordinance? And if so, can we introduce that with this? So that we can have a discussion around whether that is really the best policy or whether having rubbish bins so that they can be collected paired with a fine. If there's a trash can and you're littering, you, you deserve the fine. If there's no trash can and maybe you didn't realize the policy and now you have some litter and get a $50 fine. I, you know, I don't have a lot of sympathy for littering, but I also, you know, I, I wouldn't want to be the 13-year-old that got a $50 fine.
Yes, uh, let, Council, Council, please.
Oh, I, I, I'm not sure that, and well, I'm sure everybody's driven down Wampanoah Trail, but I'm not sure everyone has noticed the littering, um, that happened there. I don't think that's a teenager. Um, I do appreciate the sign that says, Why Litter now? Um, and I do think that a fine would probably help that, help curb the Wampanoah Trail litterer. Uh, which I frankly have almost gone out and gotten my own trash can to put there just to catch them. Cause I know that they literally just throw their Dunkin' Donuts cup every morning.
Another citizen's arrest.
Park my car on the other side. Um, split the revenue from ticket. Um, but I do think that there, it's, it's enough of a, a nuisance that you'd have to pay a $50 fine. I think there could probably be some leeway in terms of, um, age of the, the litterer. Although I think it would be helpful at home if my children were fined $50 for littering. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I'm in agreement. I, I think that the fine is, is worthy. I think every, even kids, everybody knows you shouldn't be littering. And for that matter, if the police department wants to machine gun those tickets out, I'm fine with it. Because I think we have a big enough problem with those courts. We've got to take care of it.
The, the good news, I think, is that the, the school department has, uh, offered to, um, clean up the courts. So, uh, so that's, that's great. They've got, if their folks are willing to do that, but that doesn't obviate this one. But this one's to be introduced tonight. Um, we could certainly introduce another ordinance later. Uh, Vice President, I'm sorry.
Actually, in fact, if I can speak to that, um, I, I'm not opposed to taking a look at that at some point in the future. I would suggest that it's, uh, premature now for a couple of reasons. One is, um, the, the fine ordinance is going to be new, hopefully something like this works. And the other is, I think, what Mike just alluded to and, um, what Max mentioned earlier. The fact that the school itself has put its own receptacle there since it is on school property. And, um, Mike just indicated, and actually Michelle, um, mentioned, uh, at Thursday's Parks and Rec meeting that the Barrington Middle School has, um, agreed to go out in the mornings and, and scoop up the trash or that it wouldn't become a town burden. Um, so I, I'd suggest, let's, let's see how that works first. Um, I'm optimistic that something like that would work, uh, but if it ends up becoming a recurring problem, obviously we can revisit it in the future. Or if we hear about other locations within town where it's becoming a problem, then maybe that's the time to revisit it.
Yeah, I didn't know if, if our current policy would mean that that trash can we just heard about was going to get yanked out. But so, yeah, I'm glad it's there.
Okay, uh, does anyone want to make a motion to introduce an ordinance amendment to chapter 144, Public Lands Use of Section 144 dash 17, Littering Prohibited, and Chapter 134 Parks and Recreation, Article One, General Regulation, Section 134 dash three, Rubbish, and set a public hearing for June 6, 2022?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Um, what made it seconded? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. The next item is to introduce an ordinance about attendance and leave. And, um, I think we can, um, we can just probably introduce that and, uh, Mary Ann can explain that at the next meeting when we, when we do this. So does anyone want to make a motion to introduce an ordinance amendment to chapter 33, Personnel Policies, Article Five, Attendance Leave, and a set of public hearing for June 6, 2022? Is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay. Public hearings, you're going to. Oh, you're right. Twenty-three bids. Planning Department, Walker Farm. Please.
We, um, went out to bid for, uh, landscape improvements and resilience related shoreline stabilization matters, measures at Walker Farm. We received four bids. The low bidder was at $750,000, um, by Bosley Brothers. And the high bid was up 1.495 million dollars. Um, we are, we had our consultant, um, on call, Thussan O'Neill, go through, uh, the bid packages to review them for completeness. And based on that review, the recommendation is to award the project to the low bidder. Um, this will include a 10% contingency and the bid represents the base bid for the whole project. And the funding for the project, because the bids did come in higher than anticipated, um, it is a mosaic of different funding sources that we are putting together to support the project, um, implementation and construction over the course of the summer. This will also require us to do a public outreach campaign to ensure, uh, minimization of use conflicts because the Walker Farm will continue to be open, um, during the construction. But that's a, um, once we award this bid and get approval from you all, we will work out the, um, you know, the project management details. Um, but the projects, the, all the planned details are in your packets. Includes installation of pedestrian and vehicular surfacing, low-profile paddlecraft dock, stepped paddlecraft launch, accessible viewing platform, slope restoration, salt marsh redevelopment, and, um, instead of these improvements are the installation of erosion control measures, site clearing, site furnishing, signage, fencing, and all work necessary to complete the project to the acceptance of the town. Thank you.
I have a question, uh, not about anything technical. But our motions typically say something, and in this one, in the amount of $750,000 to include an additional 10%, and I find that confusing. We actually don't mean that 750 all in. It's really 825, right?
Yeah, the 10% contingency would be on top of the $750,000.
Okay.
Phil, is that correct?
That's correct.
Uh, any questions or concerns? I'll, I'll make a motion because I want to modify that because uh, I will make a motion to award the bid for the Walker Farm Resilience and Recreation Improvement Project to Bosley Brothers of Warwick Rhode Island in the amount of $750,000 with an additional 10% contingency. Is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded? Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. The next one is a, for, uh, communications consultant. This is our town manager. Phil, you want to tell us this, kind of lay this out for us?
Sure, uh, it's pretty straightforward. Our contract with New Harbor Group had expired. And that led us to put out an RFQ for consultant services to provide the same types of services that New Harbor Group had been providing to the town and over the last couple of years. And, and they've been, they're local and they've been doing an effective job and handling a number of different issues on behalf of the town and working with us to help us internally with our own, um, uh, communications and public outreach. Um, they are one of the bidders. And the other bidder that submitted was the Boyer Group of West Hartford, Connecticut. New Harbor is a bit of a higher rate per hour, but they, it's, it's not solely based on price. It's also based on familiarity with the town of Rhode Island and experience and working with the town and familiarity with the town. So based on the overwhelming, um, it's, uh, kind of factors in favor of New Harbor with, in relation with the familiarity with the town and experience and working with us, we're recommending awarding the bid to New Harbor Group based on that hourly rate and subject, uh, to get, that will get us through this fiscal year with only a couple of months. But also what allows pending approval of the budget to continue with them in fiscal year, uh, 2023.
I'm seeing TR has his hand raised. Uh, we can. Did I miss you earlier or did you want to comment on this, TR?
No, you missed me earlier. I just need a clarification on Walker's Farm. Because I thought that was, um, Bosley and Sons, I thought was the bidding or the winning bid for the project over at Sohams, across from Soharm School. For the parking lot over there? Or did they bid on both of those?
They're, they're successful bidder on the Croquet slash Bachi Court project.
But, but not on the Harold Gibbs Woods?
We haven't, we haven't bid that out yet.
All right. So Bosley and Sons won the bid for Walker Farm also. I was confused because it was brought up at, uh, Open Space the other night that they won the other bid. Not, nothing was brought up on Walker Farm for them.
They won Walker.
Backwards.
They have Walker Farm and the Croquet Bachi. We haven't bid out the Harold Gibbs Woods Trail project yet, including that parking lot.
They got both of them. All right.
Yeah.
Just told one, so I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions, please? Council Brian.
I've, I think there, there are a number of really great marketing communications companies in the area, I think. I'm, I'm curious what the potential risk would be and maybe putting this back out to bid and trying to promote the opportunity a bit more. And perhaps engage with either minority business enterprises or women-owned business, business enterprises. There are a number in Rhode Island that have that certification that are really well, um, qualified, have worked on a lot of different projects, both for municipalities and for, um, private industry. And I think it's, it's an area where we benefit from having more than just the, the two bidders to look at.
How was this bid out? I mean, what, what was the process of doing the request?
It was advertised in the Providence Journal and can't remember how much timeframe, maybe about two weeks to respond.
Okay. Okay.
But just pointing out that delaying it puts, puts us, uh, puts us without any, um, of these services for, for the month of May.
Would we be able to extend, um, the contract for a month, not for a year? Potentially.
Or two months to just this fiscal year?
Yeah, yeah, perhaps to, to extend the current contract through the fiscal year and maybe put out a new bid for, uh, fiscal 23.
Um, I don't know if Kathy would disagree with me, but I believe that would be acceptable. Or Mike or Silo. I think that's, I think that would be okay.
Kathy? Is that, uh, we can't hear you. Okay, so I, I don't think we can hear Kathy.
Mike or Silo did nod his head. I don't know if he wants.
But I, if it's possible to hear from Kathy, I, I mean, I just don't know background of what this would do.
What was negotiated. So they, I mean, my own view is they, th- this was advertised appropriately if the.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thanks.
Phil, is there an existing contract right now or is it a month to month?
They are, uh, it's, it's, we've concluded that contract because of, um, inability to go beyond what, what has been spent.
Correct. So there is no existing contract to continue. All right, all right. Just wanted to make that.
I guess it would be a two-month contract at that point if we were, if you wanted to bid it out again. And still have services available for this fiscal year.
So take bidding out again, not, not, uh, an extension. I, I get it.
I mean, it'd be like a two-month agreement if you approved, because we did bid it out. I guess you could just do two months and then bid it out again. I'm not sure how that sits with New Harbor, but.
Vice President, please, if you want to go.
I would just suggest we, two big things came up tonight that we really want public input on and we want communication. I would suggest that we, um, move forward with this contract, we award this, this contract, and then we attempt to recruit others for next year for another bid and we go out to bid again. I'm concerned that if we went, if we went back to New Harbor and put this on hold, we have cannabis, um, we have, um, Watson. We have a number of different things that we talked about, how important it is to have public engagement. And I fear that if we, we start negotiating with our current communication specialists who know us very well, that I, I fear that we would find ourselves in a challenged position. And we, we can always go back out and, and recruit, um, other, other communications firms, but they have been with us a significant amount of time. Um, and there is female leadership on, as their managing director, but so that, that would be my suggestion. It's just that we have two very important key things coming up in the next two months that we really want involvement.
I was going to say something similar. Um, I, I think it just makes the process way too messy. Um, on New Harbor, I, I would tell the town to go pound sand. That, I mean, that they just want to bid and, um, now we want to give them a two-month contract and put it out to rebid. So I, I, I don't think that's, um, from a, a public perception, um, business relation type of approach. I don't think that's a good idea for the town to do. I do think it's something we should consider going forward, um, just for this particular bid. I don't, I just don't think it's fair.
I, I view they, they were 50% higher than the bid they beat. And so I, I think it's a reasonable thing to say, you know, we, we like working with you. You're 50% higher than the only other bid. So we do want to see what some other options are. So we don't, if I'm the, if I'm the company that's 50% higher, I, I should stand by my work and think that I could still win that bid. And perhaps that, that's how they feel, or perhaps they'd say, go pound sand, but.
And actually to that point, can I ask a question to Phil? Phil or anybody else? What, what is New Harbor's, uh, existing rate that we've had with them?
They are, um, providing services at a flat rate of a thousand dollars a month, regardless of the amount of time spent. And I believe that's based on around six hours or s- six plus hours of work per, kind of on average. I could be mis, be, I'm misremembering it, but that's roughly about what, what it is. We pay them a thousand dollar flat fee for services estimated at six or seven hours a month.
Anyone else?
Let, let's put this on the table. What, what is your assessment of their performance thus far? Can you give us examples and how they've, have actually performed, uh, from your perspective?
I, I think they did a really good job with the situation that we had with the high school with the threatening message that was in the girls' bathroom. Um, that was extremely sensitive and it, it was, we needed their input from the very beginning of the crisis to the end where the, um, it was resolved and how, how that was managed. Uh, the messaging was managed and how they have a lot of contacts with, uh, local media. They know all of our congressional representatives. Uh, they have a, they can call them up quickly and get them on the phone and, on our behalf, uh, to spread a message about certain sensitive topics. So I think, you know, beyond just their knowledge of the town, it's also their connections with, with, uh, political leaders and, uh, local media, which I think is, I'm not sure you'd find, you'd find that with a Connecticut firm. Maybe you'd find it with other firms that bid, but I would, honestly, I would recommend trying to, I would, I would recommend going with them through fiscal year 23. And, because we also have been able to work with them on initially, I was trying to get the interior, internal communications team kind of geared up, at least a preliminary work. They've had a lot of good input on that process as well, so. We've, we've developed a pretty good relationship and I would like to keep them on board through 2015, sorry, 2020, 2023 fiscal year. And then maybe can, maybe that's the recommendation that's just approved for that. And then we can bid it out after that fiscal years, a- as that fiscal year is, is closing for the fiscal year 2024.
Anyone else? I will make a motion to award the bid from New Harbor Group of Providence with an hourly rate of $150 per hour, beginning on I will make a motion toward the bid from New Harbor Group of Providence with an hourly rate of a hundred and fifty dollars per hour, beginning on May fifth, twenty twenty-two, and ending. On June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, subject to available funding, and with the option for up to four additional one-year extensions after June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Second. Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? One opposed, the mo- motion carries four to one. Uh, thanks, Phil. Um, so the next item is public. Hearing, and I am opening the public hearing into. Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash seven, an ordinance amendment to chapter one eighty-five zoning article thirty-three, short-term residential rental. Um. And would anyone from the public like to be heard on this? I, uh, I wondered if we would. Have a lot of interest in this, because in the past we have, but it doesn't appear that we do. Um, okay, I am closing the public hearing. Um. Members of the council, how do we, how do we feel about this? Vice President Hump.
Um, thank you. I, uh, actually, I agree in terms of, um, past interest. Uh, I'm surprised that there isn't more interest now. Um. I mean, one of the the issues that has come up in the past is town necessary, is it? I still don't think it's necessary, but the ordinance itself seems reasonable, so, um, I'm in favor of putting it forth, um, just to have another ordinance on the books. And I I will note, I think, um, I think it was the planning board, um. Had suggested, I think, um, instead of having, uh. Two events per calendar year, four events per calendar year with respect to a portion of the ordinance. Um, I, I'm okay with that personally, um, open to what other people think, though.
I think that is the next ordinance.
Oh, jeez, I'm sorry.
We've been talking about them together.
That's the, yeah, so I I was grouping them together, apologies.
Oh, no problem. Um. Councilor Brier.
So assuming, um, the first part of what Vice President Hump said was about, uh, short-term rentals.
Sure, correct.
That's, um, that I I feel the same way. I I don't, I don't think that we need this, um, but. For the most part, I think that this this version of it, uh, an earlier version included, I think, some more restrictions, but this version, I think. Um. Starts to strike the balance, but there there are two. Amendments I would like to make either way, uh, assuming it goes forward, that are just, um, language. Um. But then there are also some questions I have. So first, I'll just, um, the the language is, so section one eighty-five dash two thirty purpose. Um, B, the word on the second line, the word level should come before the word playing. To create a level playing field. Um, but then that that one's less material. The other one, um, section one eighty-five dash two thirty-two for occupancy. The clauses of the dwelling size need to flip. Um, right now, it says, in no event shall the occupancy of the dwelling exceed two hundred gross. Square feet per occupant, but it should be, shall exceed. Um, one occupant per two hundred square feet. Because otherwise, you could have a a thousand square foot place and one person, and that wouldn't be allowed because it's too big.
Yeah.
Um. But then on the substantive pieces, yes, yeah.
Um, so was that one eighty-five dash two thirty-two A?
A, yes.
And then, um, almost the last line in that paragraph. Um, shall exceed, uh, so we're at that in no event. Shall exceed one occupant in one place?
One occupant per two hundred gross square.
Per. Per two hundred gross square feet, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So then, um. Clauses B and C, I just wanted to discuss, I don't know if we have. Regulation right now with what parking is required in residential areas. But if that parking, I don't see a need to have additional parking beyond what a place would have. But. I do think that we could. Craft language so that the owner of a short-term rental is responsible for the legal parking of its occupants. But not necessarily that they need to potentially create larger parking lots. At their home, um, simply to accommodate rentals.
Oh, it's to make sure that, um, folks aren't taking up space on streets, and we have streets that are no parking, so if somebody has one on a narrow street. Um, they don't want to have the the occupants parking there, so. And I do think, Mike, we do have requirements in our.
We do.
For for residential.
In residence and neighborhoods, um, there there are definitely off-street. There are parking requirements, excuse me.
Right, so if if we had the parking of this ordinance aligned with the parking of residential, rather than potentially. Requiring more parking than would otherwise be required on that street.
Except that you could imagine a. Single-family house with a a little place in the back would be set up for a single-family house, and then you'd need more parking, but that wouldn't be required. Except if we add it in this. So you you'd only have the whatever the normal single family would be. Because some people have like, uh. I know there's somebody on our street that, um, has a tiny little, um, one-bedroom, one-bathroom. Little cottage on their property. But I think it's set up as a single-family home, um, and not a two-family or anything like that.
Okay, and so if the the parking is in place, what, um, what interest does the town have in. The occupancy of the unit? If a large group of people want to cram together. Um, how is the public better served by prohibiting that? I'm not saying it's not, I I don't think of the. The reason why we would do it, but I'm curious why we do want to limit potential occupancy.
Uh. I I can tell you based on our experience in other communities that the more people, I I mean, it's pretty simple, the more people in the unit. The more likelihood there are going to be complaints, either noise or, that's the main one, by the way, is. Is noise, and and the issue of parking is always an issue when you start cramming more people. And so that's that's why this was drafted to address specifically those issues.
Andy in your office is the primary.
Yes.
Drafter this, and he thought this is more of a preemptive thing, not that we have a a huge problem we have to solve. But I think he's he's just trying to be forward-thinking, I believe, and that's really what he explained to planning board when he went before that.
Yeah, because, so I looked, now I know they're for sale or for rent on more than Airbnb, but I looked and I think there's six in Barrington. Because I even, I I said, you know, I I have flexible dates, I might travel at some point within the next year.
Yeah.
Um, and and only six popped up, and only one of them is big. Um, all the others, all the others meet meet this criteria, one of them, um, was pretty large, and so. Um. Okay, so then the, uh, another suggested item to include is is, um. Section one eighty-five dash two thirty-four. At the end of the first sentence, um, so, and provide the contact information, comma. Including mobile phone number and email address. And I know the end.
Adding something, where where is that?
Um, one, one eighty-five dash two thirty-four A, so adding to the end of the first sentence after information. Comma, including mobile phone number and email address. And I know the the end of it says, um, a phone number that's active twenty-four hours a day, but, uh. A house phone being active twenty-four hours a day, if you're not in that home, it's it's not helpful. Um, I think. If we were to run into a situation where somebody is renting an Airbnb and says they don't have a mobile phone, maybe we can deal with that if it comes, but. I I don't know if that person.
How about instead of telephone number, we put a cell phone number that is active twenty-four hours a day?
Yeah, I think that's, but I think also email address, I think is helpful. Um, and that actually comes into. Play in a, in an amendment, I'm going to suggest an item C.
So, so they, we're now at, um. The first sentence remaining the same, and then the second sentence, contact information, let's include a cell phone number. That is active twenty-four hours a day and an email address.
That's what I wrote, yeah.
The first sentence remains.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, and an email address.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no.
Um, but I just, just for discussion purposes, I'm interested in what folks think about that one-hour timeframe. Um, I understand an emergency is an emergency, so you want an immediate response, but. I'd hate to see somebody get fined or sanctioned because they're at a movie and aren't checking, or something like that, you know, where. I mean, an hour is a short period of time. I don't know how strictly this is going to be enforced, but it just, it struck me as. Too short, um, in any event.
Yeah, I I had that that same note, I was going to come back to it, um, because it was, it was a, um, a question I had is. Under what situation where we would expect any homeowner to have to be at their home within an hour, and and I don't think we would.
Why make in a reasonable period is that's a term of art?
Well, I I think, I I think they should be able to address the issue. In a reasonable timeframe, that doesn't necessarily require that they have to present themselves in person at at the property.
Well, you could cross out in-person and put is able to respond. To any issues or emergencies that arise with within a reasonable period, or you could still leave for one hour, whatever.
I'd be inclined to strike in person and say within a reasonable period of time of being notified.
Yeah. I think that's good. Because even if somebody's local, like you said, they could be in a movie, they could be in a meeting, um.
Or they could be on vacation, they can't come in person.
Right.
So what I have now for Mary's purposes is in the third line, um, to strike in person. It would say to respond to any issues or emergencies arise during the short-term rental, um, within a re- a reasonable period. Um, of time from being notified.
Works for me.
Yeah. Okay, and then moving on to section C of that same, um, section. I wonder what the reason is for collecting the information, collecting the the number of days. Uh, I think it's valuable to be able to, but could potentially become burdensome to have it automatically happen. And so what I was thinking is if we require that the landlord keep. Their records for a period of three years and make them available to the town clerk if requested within thirty-one days. That way, if we had a need to know, we could do it, but it doesn't. Oblige the the clerk's office to come up with a way to collect and store this information and and keep it, uh, unless we needed it.
So I think this, um, I'm not sure what the purpose of this was, but it it may go back to something. Um. In the purpose clause here, which says, uh. Um. Sufficient collection of tax revenue. This doesn't create any additional tax, but is the point that you're gonna, you're gonna, the assessor might. Say this house is worth something, but this this property is worth more because they're. They're, they've got, uh, three hundred rentals a year. Um, so therefore it's worth more?
Well, I think Mr. Still, I I believe, um, Andy has spoken to that, where. I I, in communities where you have more common, uh, rentals of Airbnbs, air, it's, the taxes are paid, it's done through Airbnb, right? And so you have communities that they'll get a bulk payment from Airbnb and have no idea, you know, where, how many days different properties are rented, uh, rented, and so. It allows the community to have a better understanding of of the business being done in the town. It, I believe that's related to the purpose.
That's that, that's what happens elsewhere. Um, but what is the purpose of the, um, tracking of how many you have? And providing it to the clerk?
I, you know, it it gives you just a basic level of understanding of what's happening in the community. How, you know, how many homes are out there being rented out, um.
See, described Newport as being pretty much blind to that when they were getting those, you know, the ball painting.
Um, yeah, I I can think of many ways the information would be valuable if we had a question that we wanted to answer. Um, so I think making sure that those records are kept and maintained is important. I think people who are doing this, especially if they're doing it through Airbnb, I'm sure they could just run a report too. It's not, it wouldn't be burdensome for the. Landlord to do it, but then storing that database, making sure it's collected, following up with people to make sure it's sent in, it can become a burden for the clerk's office. If we, if they have to submit it every January, but if we just wait and we have everybody's email address, we can just send an email and say. You know, in the next thirty days, send this in, and then, you know, we're we're asking for it for a specific purpose. Uh, so if, if it sounds like.
If you made it, um, shall upon request, provide in writing to the town clerk?
Yeah, so so I had it written as, um, the record owner of any property engaged in short-term rental booking shall, and then I added. Record and keep three years, uh, record and keep for three years. The dates and number of days during which the dwelling was occupied by short-term renters. Comma, and the occupancy of each booking, period. These records must be made available to the clown, town clerk upon request within thirty days. Um.
So, uh, did you, you didn't get that yet? Um. So the idea is that they would keep it. Um, the additions you've made are, uh, that it would include the number of people, because that's not in there.
Yeah.
Um, and the dates, because that's not in there, just says the number of dates. Um, but I could see where that would be valuable information. Um. Uh, let me propose that something slightly different that requires hopefully less changes for Mary. Uh, record owner, uh, engaged in short-term rental booking shall. Insert the word maintain. A record of the number of days, which we have, so maintain and then delete, provide in writing to the town clerk. Maintain a record and then go back to the number of days. And then insert and dates of occupancy. For, and then go back to the past, insert three calendar years. I'm going too fast.
No. I thought, um, after number of days, comma, and dates of occupancy, or. So strike in the past.
So strike in.
Strike in.
For the past three calendar years.
Three calendar years.
Um. Uh, which the dwelling dwelling was occupied by short-term renters. And what was the other thing? It was like the number of occupants?
Yeah, and and the the occupancy of each.
Okay. And so after short-term renters, comma, and the occupants.
Occupancy of each.
Of each such looking. And then you could just add, um, record owner shall provide these upon request. Of the town clerk. I think that covers everything. Yeah, I was just trying to make it a little.
One more question, then I'm done.
Okay.
Um, and that's, so this references the the standard fine, um, section for violations of the zoning ordinance, which just notes up to five hundred dollars a day. And I didn't know if we want to discuss codifying what a first, second, third offense would be in this instance, or when that's not codified, is it the five hundred dollars a day, or is it discretion of the building official? I just wasn't sure on how that.
It'd be, I think it'd be discretion of the municipal court judge, isn't it?
Yeah, and and so because this is part of the zoning ordinance, I I think it makes more sense to keep it consistent with the fine schedule and the zoning ordinance. As Mike mentioned, if this actually goes before the judge, the judge always has discretion at that point. Whether it's mun- muni court or district court, superior court, but this would be a municipal court.
So the town doesn't directly hand a fine, we give notice of a violation and then a judge.
That's right, and and ninety-nine times of a hundred, if the violation's corrected, that's the end of it, right? The fines only there for recalcitrant people who just aren't responding or don't fix the problem.
Done.
Okay. Okay, so I asked one question and then took care of that. So I'm, I don't have any other comments. Okay. Yeah, uh, so I will make a motion to adopt two thousand twenty-two dash seven, an ordinance amendment to chapter one eighty-five zoning, article thirty-three, short-term residential rental as presented and amended. Uh, made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And we have one recusal. And I don't know if uh, you're not recusing from the second one, are you? Okay. Okay, I am opening the public hearing into two thousand twenty-two dash eight, an ordinance amendment to chapter one eighty-five zoning article four, use regulation, section one eighty-five da- dash eight, see open recreation uses, uh, section one eighty-five nine, accessory uses. Would any member of the public like to be heard? If you want to be heard, please raise your hand. Okay, seeing none, I am closing the public hearing. Members of the council? Uh, I think Vice President, um, you mentioned something about this.
I had jumped the gun before, but, um, uh, that that support the planning board's recommendation to increase, um, there's a prime record work, but increase the, um, the number of the accessory outdoor events to four days as opposed to two days as presented. For example, one way of of reasoning that I suppose is it could be, you know, one event per quarter, that would be four. But that was something that the planning board recommended that makes sense to me. I don't see any concerns with it. Um, it does not seem excessive to me, so I'd support that amendment.
Correct. I support that also, I, because I had a question and I wasn't sure from reading this if it's only if you are making the place available for somebody else to rent, or if, for example, I had two very large birthday parties that were outside my house. I I celebrate my birthday twice a year. Let's say I want to celebrate it three times a year. Am I not allowed to do that under this ordinance? Because I live in an R ten zone. Where that would not be allowed.
Or shower for a wedding, the wedding, maybe the, maybe the rehearsal dinner.
Right, yeah, yeah.
I don't think this is only for somebody else's party. In other words, I think this actually would apply to your scenario.
Yeah, and so I think. Right.
So you you could do that the four times a year, and you don't have to worry about this. We're trying to be practical about people like Jacob who want to have three birthday parties.
Yeah.
But the idea is you don't want someone to turn their property into something commercial by having these events, the bar mitzvah, the wedding, uh, on and on and on.
Yeah.
So anyhow, that's what it's all about.
Yeah, so that that's why I support increasing that to four. I had, uh, two other questions. One was if the towns and schools would need special use permits for events on government property, because it looks like, um, government property is on here requiring a special use permit. Right, is that G I, right, government infrastructure?
That includes institutional properties.
Right.
Like East Bay Center, but the town itself is exempt from zoning, right, Mike?
For solo. That, that, right, you answered before I did, so.
Okay.
By the town events.
Good.
Yep.
And then the last, and and the the limit of four, um, might not work for this, but for restaurants that have outdoor seating, if they're rented out for an event and they have people inside and outside in a neighborhood business district, um, so they would be limited to only two, or I guess now the four events.
No, because it's not a common social activity. So common social activity would be like if you have oh, you're saying.
I'm saying is if if you have a private party at a restaurant.
Yes, that piece is a private common social event, but everybody else eating there isn't. So if you're having it multiple times. I mean, if you have outdoor parties four times, five times a year, where where the outdoor space is used for the thing, I guess you would need it.
So I was thinking of it, so we have one, one restaurant that's in neighborhood business district. It has inside seating and outside seating. If the, whether the people sitting outside are not together and eating their food, that can happen every night, but if they're part of a a private party, that can only happen two times or four, four times a year, and I don't know that it necessarily changes the nature of what's what's actually happening. It's just one is allowed and one is not allowed. And so um, I just wondered if if there's a way to account for that.
Get a special use permit.
Okay.
Right, so, uh, under zoning, they could just apply for special use permit.
If they're going to have a fit.
Right.
And so is the way a special use permit works, would they get special use to have more than four, or would it be per specific event?
Just the the events, the outdoor events.
Right, but per, per event over four, or?
Yeah, I, and you know, I guess a lot, like every case is individual. Um, theoretically, the zoning board could re- restrict the special use permit to no more than ten or no more than twelve or once a month.
Just this one that you're asking for and no others.
Yeah, but it, someone's probably not going to go through the process, especially use permit for just one, right? Because that's a big process. You have to notify the neighbors, you have to put on your case, et cetera. So my guess is it'll be for, you know, to be able to do it X number of times a year. But there is a safety valve there. They can ask in that, um, district, they can ask for especially, it's an S, if you look down the list.
Yeah. That was all my questions.
Okay, so we've, we've made one modification to that, just changing it to four. Yes. I will make a motion to adopt two thousand twenty-two dash eight, an ordinance amendment to chapter one eighty-five zoning article four, use regulation, section one eighty-five dash eight, see open recreation uses, section one eighty-five dash nine, accessory uses as presented and amended. Made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. That's like, I know that was, uh, your office, it was a very involved process. And next item on the agenda is renewal of our declaration of emergency, and, um, sort of before we get to that, I just wanted to get clarification, like the as long as the state has a declaration of emergency, we can have a declaration.
That, that's right, and and we, we still, the state still does, so. Now, if if you, um, go ahead and renew this for a another month or till the next meeting, and the state declaration disappears between now and then, I doubt it will. So your authority would disappear too.
Questions? Oh, I'm opening the public hearing into the renewal of declaration of emergency, two thousand twenty-two dash ten. Any member of the public like to be heard? Okay. Seeing none, um, I am closing the public hearing. Members of the council, any comments, questions, concerns?
Just curious what, what we learned about asking other municipalities, whether theirs are still in place or if they've ended them.
I can tell you, uh, you know, I represent six other communities and they're all still in place, every one of them. Bristol, South Kingstown, West Greenwich, East Greenwich, Warwick. I I don't know if Mary found others.
I think most of them did, and then there are a few that, um, relinquished, they don't have them anymore. I think it was, I think Charleston has it. West River still has it. Very few people like you know, sent that, the, uh, you know.
The response, yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions, concerns?
No, but I'll make a motion to adopt the two thousand twenty-two dash ten renewal of declaration of emergency as presented.
Made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay, set agenda for the next town council meeting, discuss and act on a green memo format, that's out to a number of committees, town manager and solicitor. Public hearing on the littering. Uh, public hearing on personnel policies, invasive species control, uh, from Ned Barton, uh, he is, I guess, trying, hopefully, he's, he's trying to get the uh, country club to contribute as in the past.
Maybe a determination by the country club and whether they grant the lake to the, to the town as well, which I don't know that we have an answer for that yet, Phil?
Not yet, no.
So, uh, if they were, I mean, one of, and this is unscientific, but one of the engineers on resilience did point out that if that were, if you just left it, you know, those things eventually become a meadow. They just get overgrown and then, you know, it's no longer draining, and the drainage uh, patterns look like it would cover the country club. So they should have an incentive to remediate that to avoid, uh, I don't know, the ninth hole getting something I told.
Seventeen hole holes.
Yeah, yeah. Lot of water hazard.
Now, this, this comes secondhand, and and I'm not certain of this, but I, there was some question as to whether there was a true uh, resiliency benefit to remediating it, and I believe that was presented before resiliency, but I'm, I'm not the liaison, I don't know.
I am, and yeah, they're, they, um, I think their position was that they did not uh, see it as a resiliency benefit, they saw it as a conservation benefit. And pointed to Conservation Commission who, um, made a recommendation. So they didn't really oppose it, they just said, I don't think it does much for resiliency. Okay. Uh, but we'll have their minutes where they put that down. Uh, anything else to add? Oh, cell tower? Cell tower cannabis?
Everything goes as as planned on cannabis in terms of getting the word out. I suspect this will be a very, very lengthy meeting, so perhaps we could hold other, uh, agenda items unless absolutely necessary.
I have, I have one that I don't anticipate being, um, particularly long, but, uh, Pride Month resolution. And also, uh, members of the D E I committee are working with some community members to plan a plot, uh, pride flag raising ceremony for the early evening of June first. Um, they haven't submitted the paperwork yet to the town manager, but they intend to do so this week. So I just wanted to, you know, that the resolution will be forthcoming and also just get the word out about um, the evening of June first, which is a Wednesday, I believe.
Sixth meeting, though, right?
Well, the resolution would be for the June sixth meeting, but the the flag raising ceremony, I'm just letting people know it'll take place before our next meeting.
Yeah, I'm sorry, what time is this?
Uh, the time is not set yet, so they actually said, you know, don't, don't mention the time we're planning on in case it ends up being a different time, but the early evening of June first. And if, um, if that agenda is filling up and it sounds like we'll have a lot of people for the public hearing, delaying the the green memo, uh, among is not a problem.
Okay.
Anything else?
You know, polling, like, when do you want to have this workshop? Because it's, it's a busy month. You've got budget hearing on Wednesday, May eleventh, you've got a financial meeting on May twenty-fifth.
Appreciate that you raised that, Mary. Thank you.
I'm a little, I'm a little nervous, like, when we're going to do this, before June sixth.
And we've got to have, um, we don't want to do it next week because we're not going to have enough time to, you know. We'd like to get some input and kind of spreading the word about it.
There won't be any town meetings scheduled on May thirty-first, because it's the fifth Tuesday.
Okay.
So, I mean, it doesn't give us a lot of time before a meeting, but it maximizes the time between now and then, pretty much, because after that, we start to get into different boards and commissions having conflicts. Say that, having not looked at my calendar yet. Right?
I could do that. I don't know if people are taking longer memorial days.
What, is it May thirty-first? That's Tuesday, May thirty-first?
Yes.
At seven o'clock?
How long would you expect this meeting today? And I I ask because I remember last year we had a brief meeting before the F T M. That's an option, you know.
I think.
This'll be longer.
Yeah.
Because you don't want to have to cut it short.
You may I don't know if we have to do a, a meeting before the F T M. For some reason, we always did, and it, but I think we took care of.
The salary, I don't know whether we're doing it. Phil, are we doing that ordinance salary that I asked? Like, it needed to be updated because it's been a couple of years.
I pro, I think so, I think we have to.
So I think we need an intro prior to the F T M. Or I could, yeah, uh, I have to think this out here, because that week, the week of May thirty-first, we have to get our agenda out. So Monday is the holiday, Tuesday, you know, we have, we have to meet with President Carol. The thirty-first, we could meet, it's, it's a, it's late, or we could meet the week before to discuss the agenda. Which is the week of the financial topic. Like, it is tough.
Been a while since we've done it.
We switched the dates for the last couple of years.
That's it. Last minute vote to switch today to the F T M. People would love that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So here's the thing, a workshop, under our rules definition of a workshop, is that there is not public comment. And as I think about that, if we are inviting for the workshop of certain people to sort of weigh in on the zoning piece of it, it probably makes sense because we can get people interested, but but the question of whether we're going to put this on the ballot is not for that meeting. It's for the meeting a week later. So people have plenty of chance to talk about it a week later. But we'll have started the process of zoning on the chance that it is going to pass either with us or after the referendum or whatever. So my preference would be kind of control this meeting in terms of time, not have public comment, but have invited representatives from those boards.
I think that makes sense, and I wonder if something we could do to incentivize people to actually attend that would be to also provide the opportunity to sign up to speak at the June sixth meeting. So anybody who wants to speak gets to speak, but you can come and sign up and get your place in line and speak soon. And it's just a reason to encourage people to attend and get the information.
Sure.
I don't know if that's more complicated and needed, but I was just thinking if we take away the public comment, we might also take away the public.
Yeah. Yeah, although, I mean, I'm I'm sort of less, I wanted to develop interest, so I think that does it. But on the zoning stuff, we'll have plenty of time to to get public input, any zoning thing requires a public hearing anyway. And and that sort of depends on things. But I think that that's a good idea to say, this is your chance to sign up. If we can get a list of people, we'll call them in that order, whoever signed up first. And then when we get through that list, we'll start calling on people.
You sign up on the website and.
We set something up through comments on Zoom, although I hate comments on Zoom for town meetings. Was it open?
Yeah.
I didn't see any.
Please Ryan told us that the sound is good.
Yeah, that's right. We had one.
Yeah, I I reached out to one of the department heads and I said, how how is the sound? And she said, it's awesome. So I feel good about that, so.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Guys, I know you you worked hard to get this. It's nice to be able to do the the hybrid, but it it's not very useful if people can't hear what we're saying, so. So this is great. Okay, so workshop will will keep it just to the people that are invited. We're going to invite people from. So can you reach out to the chair of planning, zoning, E D C and Bay Team? And ask for them to have a representative or a couple if they want, and the police department, police department is here, so. So anything else?
I do want to talk to you about like an agenda meeting because I don't like it's it's coming fast. Like I can already see the end of the month.
I know, but we we don't have to keep everybody, so I'll stick around because I gotta.
Or was the reason for clarifying the workshop that we're going to move this to before the F T M?
No, no, keep.
Keeping it on the thirty first, okay. I'll move to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Have a long night. Thanks.